Jim.
You said you have...
Richard.
...agenda, right?
Yes.
Chris.
There's actually a few on here, huh?
Yeah, hopefully not too bad. I would think that the...
Of course. Trying to remember what the email about that was. Are you got the computer? I should bring my computer.
Let's see, do they have the emails in here? See, I still can't read this shit.
What do you mean?
Well...
Almost. You guys can go live. You'll have people watch, okay. I'll call it to order when... Yeah, I'm just writing some notes.
I can't read it. Take my glasses off.
And there's nobody else we need to record as present, okay.
I just, I would've thought that all the emails and everything...
You guys ready? Ready when you are. You guys are ready. Okay, Nora, I'm gonna go. I'm gonna call it to order. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna call a meeting to order. Thank you. As soon as you guys are done talking, we'll start the meeting. Thank you. Believe it or not, we can hear you up here better than you can hear us out there. So, I don't know why, the acoustics of the room, they should've set it up backwards or something, but... I understand they're gonna move us all back to the town hall anyway and put us up on a stage and give you guys all straws and paper towels to make spitballs. You sit in the auditorium for all these meetings, but they're in the process of... They got the highway department wiring it for sound, so it should be road-ready. So tonight, roll call. To my far right, Troy Larson. Then Veronica Debonese. In the middle here, myself, Jim Akabachi. Richard Semple to my left, Chris Conti to my far left. Over on the side, we've got Josh Flaherty. And he's changed titles about four times since he came to work here. He came here as a conservationist. Then he became land use coordinator. And now they've got a new title. Is the new title official yet?
Yes, Director of Planning.
Director of Planning, okay. So, so he's either a great politician and been able to convince a bunch of people of a lot of stuff. He's money hungry. I don't know which it is, but he's shown progress in a short period of time. First order of business, approval of meeting minutes, 4:23, 25. I know that Mr. Conti reviewed them. Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve them as presented?
So moved.
So, who said so?
So moved.
So moved by Richard Semple to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Troy Larson. All in favor? Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
The minutes from 4:23, 25 are approved. And... And for the record, whoever's preparing these, they're not putting a signature line on them anymore or a date line. I'm doing it, but... Today is 5, what?
14.
14. Done. Okay. We have one continued and six new public hearings. We're gonna do the continued hearing first, 2:25, Neighbor Works Housing Solutions. 2:20, Cranberry Highway. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
You guys are a motley crew. What do you got for us tonight?
Best we can. Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, attorney on behalf of Neighbor Works. Robert Corley from Neighbor Works is two over from me, and we have architect, engineer at the table. We have the rest of the team in the audience. We are going to, at least up front, try to be briefer with you this evening. We had submitted a... Our last supplemental submission on May 7th, and on May 9th, the peer reviewer issued his final peer review letter, which you have in your file.
Yeah, I'm looking around the room to see if he's here. I don't see him.
He wrote in an email yesterday.
Okay, no, I've seen the email. I just didn't know if we had his... Okay, go ahead. Keep sorry. Keep going.
Yeah, I think he said he might not be able to. So, all of the substantive issues had been resolved, as you see in his report. He did suggest a few conditions here and there which are acceptable to the applicant. There were two technical points that we wanted to discuss with you tonight. One dealing with whether a 10-inch or a 12-inch pipe should be used in part of the design, which...
Is that stormwater pipe drainage?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can discuss that. The other was a request on a potential waiver of the maintenance bond, but we wanted to discuss that with you. Those are the only two technical issues that were there, and we think, you know, we're happy to resolve them however the board wants to resolve them. After discussion and questions and answers with you this evening, if the board agrees that the issues have all been resolved with conditions as per the report, we would welcome the opportunity, if the board says agrees, to close the public hearing and move on to the next step of the decision process. Do you have any questions?
You'd love to move forward.
We would love to move forward.
You don't wanna tie this thing up in ZBA hearings for the next six months?
No, we wanna free up your agenda, too. So that's it for our...
Okay. And have other members of the board had the opportunity to see the email from Phil Cordero?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions from anybody?
I have a comment. Also, on the peer review that we received May 9th from Phil, it talks a little bit about a 6-inch water line. We're gonna... You're gonna extend from the existing building to go to a 4-inch water line?
So, for the record, my name's Cameron Campbell. I'm the civil engineer of the project. And there's an existing 6-inch water line running along the back of the existing buildings that feeds the fire services for the building. We're gonna extend that and keep it 6-inch, and it'll be a 6-inch brought into the new building for the sprinkler system and a new 4-inch tapped off of it for domestic. And we plan on coordinating that with the water department. We still have to do a flow test out there to make sure that pipe has enough flow for the...
Yeah, that was one of my next questions, too. The fire and water department, we're waiting for a response from them?
So, we got a response from fire. They're all set with the plans. We provided them with supplemental sweat path analysis for the front entryway turnaround to show that their truck can make it around, and they're all set with it. And water didn't really have any significant comments. It's just, we have to work with them on finalizing the hydrant location, which we're planning on doing before pulling the building permit.
And that was one of the conditions that Phil had suggested, which was, quote, "The applicant shall work with the Wareham Water District on the suitable extension of water services to the proposed building for domestic and fire flow services."
So that'll be in one of your conditions?
That would be a condition that he suggested that we're fine with, which would address that.
And along the lines of the sweat path analysis, if, in fact, we do give you an approval or at least close this evening, an approval will be conditional upon that letter appearing in the file before it's a final approval. Okay, you see? Okay, go ahead.
And I got one more question. I know we talked about delivery parking for the new structure. Did we talk anything about delivery parking for the existing structure? Because that's the one road that goes in and out to that area. There's people playing all around. And I hate to see, you know, deliveries backing up traffic during... In that area, do we... Did you put any delivery parking in for the existing buildings at all?
We didn't change the layout of the existing parking lot. There is a, at the... On the easterly side at the end, along the rows of parking, there is a crosshatched area, a pretty large crosshatched area, that a truck could pull off and sit if they wanted to.
Is that how they do it now, do you know, or...
Yes.
Any study been done on any of that? I know you did a traffic study. I did read that for the highway, but within the interior of the structures?
That's how it's... That's how the trucks deliver now for the existing, and it hasn't been an issue. And as was stated the last time, the play area is typically along the backside of the building. There's a playground there and play equipment. And as you... As was recommended the last time we were here, we added speed pumps and so on in the existing parking lot to slow down traffic flow.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions, too.
I do have a question.
Go for it.
Regarding the 10-inch to the 12-inch pipe, looking for approval from this board, is that within our purview to approve that?
I'm sorry.
The 10-inch to the 12-inch storm drain pipe, that's not a zoning issue. Oh, is my mic... Yeah, my mic's on.
That's a... That's two engineers. One says 10 and the other says 12. And they're gonna get out... They're gonna arm wrestle. Whoever gets the other guy down will decide whether it's 10 or 12.
Well, it's even better than that. The peer reviewer deferred implementation of this request to you guys.
Who wants...
I'm not... I'm not arm wrestling you.
Only you guys feels the weakest.
I can discuss it a little if you would like.
Okay, go ahead, yeah.
So, the 12-inch minimum was typically... Was originally put for concrete pipes, which, when the water flows...
12-inch minimum imposed by whom?
It's an engineering standard.
Okay.
And it's more for, in roadways.
Okay.
And for subdivisions and the like, not typically for private developments. It was put in place for 12-inch concrete pipes because the water... They're a little rougher, so the water doesn't flow through them as nicely. But now with the new HDPE, the plastic pipes with the smooth...
It's slicker.
It's slicker and they move. And I provided Mr. Cordero with pipe sizing analysis, and it shows that the 10-inch pipes are more than capable of handling the water that's gonna be flowing through them.
Yeah, I get it. So, is there a significant cost difference?
I'd say a little. I don't know the cost off the top of my head, but there is...
There is a cost.
There is a big... There is a difference, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well...
Oh, I got one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
I don't see Raymond Fava here.
Oh, he... He's there.
He's here. I've been watching him.
Oh, okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure all his needs were met.
I'm gonna have him come up.
Okay, thank you.
So... You know, I don't care if it's 10-inch or 12-inch because it's not gonna make my house wet. But I do care about the gentleman that Mr. Conti just talked about. And there's been an ongoing concern, and I know you guys have worked real hard to put him at ease. Can you hear me, sir? You can hear me okay? Okay. Do you... During this portion of the conversation, do you wanna come closer forward so you can hear us better? Can you hear everybody okay?
I can hear them all right.
Okay. I've observed... I'm talking to the applicant, but I'm looking at you. I've observed that this applicant has worked diligently with our town peer engineer to make sure that existing water infiltration from this property onto yours is corrected and future development won't create any new water going over. Between two different engineers working together, which is rare, usually they fight each other like lawyers. And I really think your interests have been met, okay? But we've made it a... We've kind of put it into the conditions that they... You guys enlarged your pond, or what did you do to...
So, along the existing parking lot?
Yeah.
We added a stone trench.
Yeah, a trench.
With a little bit of curbing, so you can pond there.
And then you put a berm or something up to...
Yeah, so there's a... It's a stone trench with a curb on one end, so it'll swale and the water will pond on our site instead of running over onto his. And then we also added a chain link fence along the back of that to stop any debris from blowing onto his land. And then the rain garden that's there now, we redesigned it to work with the new development.
To handle more, to handle more.
Yeah, to work with the new development.
Could you hear that, sir? Come on up. Come on up and...
I'll let you stay right.
Get... Yes. Thank you, sir.
Raymond Fava, 2226 Cranberry Highway.
Is yours the one that's mostly brick on the front?
Brick house, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Go ahead. What's your question?
Yeah, I was just glancing at the new...
We were talking in the audience when you made us stop.
Yeah, 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 that's okay. I'd rather... Now it's, you know... Now we're not all waiting... We're still all waiting for you, but it's on the record.
Yeah, where's the... Oh, yeah. Here. I think we agreed before to make it parallel to my property line so that it varies in width. This here's a constant width all the way across. I don't think that's gonna hold much water at all. So... And I think it was, what, three feet you wandered off of the... My property line, the face of the curb in the back, is that what you said? Well, no more than that. The closer to my line, the better, but where was the cross-section of this thing?
Engineer here and all this and...
See, I can talk to it a little. We... The curbing runs along the existing woods line because we don't... We don't wanna take out trees that buffer between his and our property. Because, I mean, trees...
Are you hearing this, sir?
The woods and natural... The woods and trees are a better drainage solution than anything. But, so we...
You wanna stop it before it gets to the woods and trees?
Yeah, exactly. We wanna stop it before it gets to the trees, so...
I don't want it to stop before it gets to the trees.
Right now, it's... There's... It's all like, kind of a depressed grass area that's unmaintained. And we're proposing to put a stone there with the curbing to really let it soak into the ground.
Can you pull the section?
What is that?
So, when we went out and met with Raymond, we toured the site. We walked his property, walked our property line to look at the existing conditions. It was very cold that day, oddly, but it was after some heavy rains. And so we discussed...
This is the one.
Yeah, we discussed on how to keep the water on the existing parking lot and not have it flow over. We did not see a lot of areas where the water was running over. But we insisted on putting a curb to make sure that that wasn't the condition.
Like a keep-cod berm type thing?
Yes, and then on the... Go ahead.
It's concrete.
Concrete, yeah. A real concrete curb.
Yeah, it's not at the edge of pavement. It's at the back edge of the trench. So, if it were to ever overtop, it would act as a wear, per se.
Yeah, so you have pavement, rock trench, stone, and then a concrete curb.
So you've kind of turned yourselves inside out, truly trying to fix a problem that you kind of inherited when you bought the property?
Yeah, and we wanted to, you know, truthfully solve the problem.
Yeah.
Even if it's not necessarily evident everywhere. But we wanted to like, put a... Based on what Mr. Semple had told us the last time we were here, we wanted to make sure, from an engineering standpoint, that there would be nothing crossing over there. And then the fence only came because we were seeing that people were leaving some debris and some trash sort of getting over there. We had cleaned it out prior at his request, but in order to prevent that from next winter or some, you know, some...
Yeah, I get it.
People were dumping things there that... Not us, but someone else. So we decided to put the fence up as well.
Yeah, we had... Yeah, we had agreed before to keep the curb 6 inches higher than the end of the end of the pavement. And now you got a law.
Well, it's... But it's higher than the rock trench. So that it's the pavement, then the rock, so this is below. So it's well above the rock trench.
Yeah, but this won't hold hardly nothing, no water at all.
Well, any water that would come up above the rock trench would certainly be held by that. Would you like it a little higher? We just don't want it to be like a... You know, it's...
Usually you make this stuff go through, but I wanna, you know...
Yeah.
This is our one chance to torture you, so we're gonna get you... Once the thing is built, it's hard, you know...
Well, we had agreed before to make it 6 inches higher than the end of the...
6 inches gonna make you happy?
There's a flat.
6 inches gonna make you happy?
Yeah, yeah, if it's above the...
Can you guys give them the 6 inches?
If it's above the edge of the blacktop, go up 6 inches. That's what we agreed on before.
I can't believe I'm negotiating 6 inches.
We can certainly do that.
I would say the design, I mean, the design we have meets all the regulations and Phil...
I know. I'm not worried about meeting regulations. I'm worried about community...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Perception.
Yeah, well, it's not a...
You guys wanna be a good neighbor, and I think this is a... You know, for 6 inches of concrete, how long is it?
Yeah, I... It's not a problem.
Okay.
Well, I was like, sort of discussing the effect of it, other than the cost.
And to the engineer, you can make sure the plans reflect that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, for the record, the plans are gonna be modified to reflect that.
Correct.
So if we say okey-dokey tonight, the okey-dokey is... It's implied that that plan's gonna be...
It'll be more than implied. It could be a condition that the plan...
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, but I'm trying to say it nice.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get it.
On the way out of the house tonight, I got marching orders, be nice.
It'll get done before the show.
It's a real difficult task for me.
You mentioned variable width here, but on the plant here, we don't show a variable width.
So this is in coordination with the 10-inch and 12-inch pipe is gonna be the green...
It's two areas. One area is wider than the other, but...
From that to relieve the pressure, or this is just a swell?
I wanted it parallel to my property line.
So it's just a swell on... The 10 and 12 inches, just the pipe sizes on the new site. It's just between the catch basins and the infiltration systems. There's no related to what we're talking about. Yeah, there's no piping for the system that we're talking about right now.
So, I just... I'm going back. I know 10-inch and I know 12-inch. And I know 12-inch holds a lot of water compared to 10-inch. The swell, I mean, the smoothness or the flow that you're talking about, how is that achieved? The concrete, what, seems to hold things and slow it down? And the plastic doesn't hold anything?
The concrete's a rougher surface, so it's not about holding the water. It's about transporting it from one location to the next, so...
So after a while, when it runs through, it gets pretty slick anyway, so, I mean...
It's from slime.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's just the numbers?
I'm concerned. I think we better stick with... In my opinion, I'm going with the 12-inch. I'm not going with the 10. That's all I...
Okay, well, that's why... That's why we give everybody a chance to talk. And I know if we made a slide at the playground out of concrete, the kids wouldn't go down it very quick. But I know if we made it out of PVC, they'd all get hot bottoms. So let's make the pipe 12 inches and not... You know, let's just go by the standard. Keep Mr. Semple happy. We've got... I'm sorry, I was just gonna call him Mr. Rogers. We've got the neighborhood happy with his 6 inches. Are you satisfied, sir? Are you... If they give you the... If they raise that 6 inches, are you satisfied now that you're gonna be more protected?
And I wanted it parallel. He said you don't wanna cut down any trees. I wanted it parallel to my property line to make it wider. Because I can't see the... This ain't the same width as this, is it? Is that what you mean by the variable width?
Yeah.
That parallel?
Yeah, so this is the main area of concern, and then it comes all the way down there. So it runs the entire length?
It's to be like a one-man committee.
But this width here is less than this one, right?
As far as the swell?
Yeah.
Yeah, this one is consistent all the way down. It looks like it just narrows a bit at the edge.
Is that what you mean by variable width?
So I can say that the asphalt on our site is not parallel with your property line now.
No, yeah, right.
So it's gonna be variable, whether we hold parallel to your line or parallel to the asphalt. It's... One's gonna be variable width.
So is the swell consistent in its size all the way along the property line?
It's consistent in depth. It's... Width is... It varies slightly.
Yeah, so it varies slightly. It tapers a little bit down the end there. But it's consistent all through that, and that's the main area that we were talking about, but it does go all the way.
I think you're being... I think you're being pretty well served, sir.
Make it parallel and...
Well, it is parallel.
I mean, parallel to my property lines. It makes it more...
It is.
A larger...
Establish the report. Go ahead.
A larger thing.
It is parallel, and this is...
Not to mine, it ain't.
Yeah, but this is a tree line there, like it... We'd be into the trees if we went all the way in.
This is my property line here.
Yeah.
It diverges. See, here it says it's about five feet.
Trees are always providing screening.
At the edge of the... From my line, but on this end, it's about 15, you know, it diverges. And I wanted that pool to diverge with it. So it holds more water in it, so...
This holds the water here. The curb is right along the property line. If we go further over, we're getting into the wood line. So that's why it's where it is. But that would require us to cut trees down.
So what?
Well, you have less screening at that point.
Yeah, but not even that. It's... That's a pretty...
Screen, I mean, I got a lot of trees.
That don't make any sense.
There's quite a bit of distance between that driveway, the parking lot, and then the edge of his house, isn't there?
Yes, but it's... There's not a lot of distance between the edge of the driveway and his property line, so we can't cut into his property. And we're trying to keep...
I thought it was on your property, but if it's his property, you guys aren't cutting anything.
And we're trying to keep screening on our property as well as his because eventually, I mean, if someone ever bought his house, they could clear it, and then we'd have no screening whatsoever if we cleared all the trees on our property. So you try to keep as much trees as you can. And I think with the plan we have, it works with the site the best way it can.
There isn't much... There ain't much tree growth on your land anyway. I kinda... It's mostly bushes and stuff. There are three big trees right near the dumpster that's 75 feet tall. And I think, I mean, did you see if those big trees are on your land or not?
Especially up the top on that seam up the top.
Yeah, right where the dumpster is there. There's trees, 75-foot trees. They're about six feet apart. And I'm not sure whether... I wish I would've marked it out myself, but there's everything in the way. I couldn't do it.
Well, the swell and the curb are... Whether they're right on the property line or three feet away from the property line, it's functioning the same way. So there's... It's the dead end, the end stop of the water. So it's stopping it in its tracks where it is. Taking trees down to move it over a couple of feet doesn't improve the condition. It's just moving it left to right, whereas it's right now catching any water that would come over. So the functioning of this pulls the water back with the curb. So nothing beyond the curb is gonna be getting water. So we don't need to cut the trees down to do that.
I think I've heard enough, and I think the board has heard the concerns of the neighbor.
We'll do that.
And we'll take it into consideration when we make our final decision.
6 inches will be raised.
You okay with that, Raymond?
Easy, easy.
Yeah, let's see. If it works.
Raymond, I think the 6-inch...
Fava, F-A-V-A.
Mr. Fava, we've heard your concerns. We've given you adequate time to speak, and we've listened. And when we make our final decision, we'll review the plans and we'll treat you as fair as we can. Thank you for your input.
Okay, yeah.
We can't go on... We can't... We can't go on all night with this discussion. We've heard your concerns. We've heard the applicant's answers. We've heard the peer reviewers' answers. We've heard the applicant's engineers' answers. The board will make a decision based on what we've heard.
Okay, you don't... So it should show how far off my line the chain link fences. How far is that gonna be? It should show right here. Where's my property line on this thing?
It's not shown on that section.
Does it show anywhere?
It will be inside your property line.
Yeah, but how much?
Running all the way up.
How close to my line is it gonna be?
It's about four feet here and gets wider towards the end. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
But we can adjust it to where you like it.
Oh, the fence ain't gonna be parallel to my line either?
It's parallel to the curbing.
Oh.
We can put it right on the line if you like. Depending on the trees, like we talked about.
I mean, I don't care about the fence, but if you make the thing bigger and make it an eight-foot fence instead of six, because you can still throw rubbish over a six-foot fence.
Are we allowed to do eight foot? If we're allowed, we will.
Seven by right.
What's that?
Seven, seven by right.
You can have a seven-foot fence by right in Wareham, believe it or not.
Seven, okay.
And if you go, if you smile nicely at the building inspector, you might get eight, but he might make you let us bless it.
So we'll do the seven-foot fence and the 6-inch extension to the curb as Raymond asked for.
And I see the notes being written on that. Thank you, Mr....
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for your input. And I thank the applicant for their willingness to cooperate with the neighbor.
So I have a question. There's a requesting of a waiver on the maintenance bond.
So I, I have a question. There's a requesting of a waiver on the maintenance bond?
You have a question?
About the waiver for the maintenance bond.
Ask away.
What's the reason for the, for the waiver of the maintenance bond?
What's the justification for requesting a waiver of a maintenance bond? You guys are just such good guys, you don't need a bond?
No, it's not that, and, and as you know, with 40Bs, costs are always a question, and everything we've discussed tonight raises costs, fences and concrete and things, the pipe. And so we were hoping, given that this is a long-developed site and NeighborWorks has a track record of, of keeping the property nice, we're hoping that might be a way where to offset some of the increased costs elsewhere by just not having to provide the bond, in this case for landscaping and the others, given Neighbor, it's not a new site. It's one they're redeveloping that they're already on.
I, I understand, but I, but I can answer from my point of view to Veronica's question. Landscaping has become a very sensitive issue on the site plan reviews, and I think they'd take, they'd get one of them barbecue spits and they'd roast us. If they had tar and feathers, but people aren't allowed to have chickens in Wareham anymore, so they can't tar and feather us, but.
They could bring them in from another town, but.
They could. Well, you're right. They could bring them in, so I'm scared. I think you better keep the bond.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's fine. It was just a.
Yeah, no, I understand.
A humble request.
We can't give you something if you don't ask for it. I get it, I get it, but I think this is one that we better, as a board, we'd be doing ourselves an injustice to.
Understood.
Those were all the, I mean, those, the issues we've now discussed were all of the ones and some that were raised in the final peer review, so.
I saw the final peer review. Pierre seems somewhat satisfied. We've made a few notes tonight that are in the record. Before, anybody from the board with any more questions? Anybody in the room or on Zoom that has any comment they want to make? And in about 30 seconds, if somebody makes a motion to close the public portion of this hearing, we can get a second and vote on that. So moved. So we have a motion by Troy Larson to close the public portion of this hearing.
Seconded.
Seconded by Richard. All in favor? Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
We're closed. Nobody can speak but the board. Anybody got any more comments?
Nazzy did come online, did he?
Did, is Nazzy? No, he hasn't. He probably fell asleep. Where he is, it's like 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning. He tried, he was on the phone with me earlier. He wanted to try to be, he may still show up online, but I'm comfortable moving forward. I would like to, I would like to, we've closed the public portion of this hearing, but I think I'd like to, the board's always able to have two weeks to, to make a final decision, and I think I'd like to put you guys off for a few more days. We can make a decision in the meantime and go into the office and sign it individually, rather than take a vote tonight where our chair is out of the country and possibly asleep. I'd just like to give him that one last shot at any comment, but we'll, we'll make, we've closed the public port. Go ahead, you.
Which is the point, I wanted to ask a question. That's fine. Question on, on your process for decisions, if that is something where, so that the board in those two weeks or at the end of the two weeks has something to look at. In, in many towns, I have drafted, prepared a draft decision for.
Please do.
Happy to do that with the conditions?
I knew where you were going, yeah.
Okay, and we'll submit that to you.
Do it. Do it. Get it in, get it into us, and then when we get that, we'll give our chair the, one last chance at the chop and bark, and if that's.
Well, I'll submit it to you.
Not going to happen.
Sonia.
Do you guys want to take a vote on that?
I'll, I'll, I'll take it as a, as a motion and seconded.
Yes, yes.
Just one thing, so the conditions.
The, the conditions are going to be the.
The conditions would be a letter from the fire department, the water department, making sure.
Let them, yeah. Go ahead. I know we closed it, but you got a concern. What is it?
Yeah, Mr. Corley.
Yeah, so we have a, a funding concern.
Okay.
At the state level.
Okay.
And we were advised by HLC, or formerly DHCD. This is a, there's a funding application in place for the senior housing, and we were very much hoping to get a vote tonight, hopefully in favor, but in order to proceed with our funding application, or they would, I was told, push us out another round to what.
And that could be six months.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
And so I heard that directly.
I'd be more comfortable, I, I really feel as though you guys have been a good applicant, somebody that we'd like to encourage to work within the town of Wareham. So that said, I'm going to hope that the board agrees with me and ask for a, a motion either to approve or deny this application at this point.
So was Mr. Simple done with his list of conditions? We thought, he didn't mention the 12-inch pipe.
He's going to make a motion, and he's going to put them all right into the motion.
Okay.
That, that would be my preference.
Good with that.
Yeah. So who wants to start? You want to, you want to be the, make the motion?
Mr. Simple can make the motion.
I make the motion to approve this project.
Okay. Subject to?
Subject to a letter from the fire department stating that the travel is fine, a letter from the water department making sure that whatever you came up with is fine. It's a 12-inch pipe. Ray, Ray was concerned, saying that there was six inches higher than the blacktop. Is that going to be something possible?
Yeah, the curb will be extended six inches from what's written on the plan currently.
Six inches higher.
Okay, and then seven-inch fence, uh, seven-foot fence?
Yes, sir.
And no maintenance bond?
No, there is going to be.
There is going to be a maintenance bond?
There is going to be a maintenance bond.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. Could I just ask in the motion, because it's a 40B, could you approve it with conditions and the waivers as requested, except the maintenance bond?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And all Allen and Major's.
Hope our scrivener could hear what you said. You're talking into a microphone, right?
I am, and I'm happy to prepare a draft.
And like, yeah, you'll prepare a draft, and then as long as Allen and Major's is good with everything, as Chris said.
Yeah, we'll get Phil to bless it too.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Any other conditions anybody's concerned about? I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Veronica Debonese. All in favor? Mr. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Debonese?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Simple?
Aye.
Mr. Conti?
I'm going to deny.
Okay. You still pass, but you got, it's a, a one, two, three, four?
Four to one.
Four, one, zero.
Well, we, we very much appreciate your time and all of your efforts and Mr. Cudero's efforts on this as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience with the, with the neighbor too.
Yes.
No, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and we're putting down that Conti, you didn't, you didn't abstain, you denied. You said nay.
Denied.
All right. And we'll take just as long with the other six, and everybody will be home by 2 o'clock in the morning. The next one up, 1225 TTR LLC, special permit, variance and SPR, Three-Toe Road. And this needs to be read in. And I see big rubber bands around stuff, so here's one. My goodness, send one this way. I'm going to get you another one. Don't worry. I'll take this one. I guess it's going to go on it. Yeah. This looks like, is this what we were just doing? This is the wrong one, 40B. Sorry, give them back.
Yeah, this is the wrong one.
Get that out on the table, but we didn't need it, so I didn't pass them out. Sorry, guys.
That's the 220, right?
Thank you. Told you we could waste some time. But if we don't put it all back away now, you know what happens.
You're all going to be in trouble.
Well, not only am I going to be in trouble, but these papers are going to be in their folder, and their papers are going to be in this folder, and nobody's going to be able to get a permit.
Rubber bands match your shirt tonight, you're all right.
I think you were on your shirt, because I saw her putting the rubber bands on there, and I wanted to be coordinated. Now I got to go home and change my shirt. Outback Engineering, if I get the right one, I didn't even read that. This is.
1225.
TTR LLC?
Yep.
Okay. I see. Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing on May 14, 2025 at 6:30 PM in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 12-25, Zone 25-6, for a special permit, variance and site plan review from the requirements of Article 15, Section 1520, Article 9, Table 920, 921, and Section 910, and Article 16 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to TTR LLC, in care of Jillian, Attorney Jillian Morton of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., seeking to change the current use of motor vehicle service to office space for general contracting business with an accessory use of warehouse, storage of associated materials for general contracting business located at Three-Toe Road, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map 108, Lot 1004AA in the industrial zoning district. And go ahead.
All right, excellent. Good evening. Attorney Jillian Morton. I have Charlie Morris, who's the principal of TTR, and also his company, which I love that you're here to be able to discuss what kind of contracting he does. And then our engineer, Jason Youngquist, is here. This was actually in front of you, if it looks familiar.
I don't remember. This was in front of us, the gentleman. He's a, he's a jobber or he's a subcontractor to a, made to a general contractor, and he didn't know how to do an application, and he got tripped up along the way.
We're here. We're here.
So today, he's got you here in place of him. Hopefully, we can move a little more smoothly this time.
His, his business actually is the contracting, as far as what he's doing, is the renovations and schools, some industrial spaces and things. So what we're looking for here is, number one, a use variance, right? So in this district, because his use, the accessory, is 63% and not 40, we have to come in front of you to say, is that appropriate for the site, as well as that site plan review. So we did submit the plans that have additional landscape buffers, pretty up the site. If you've walked the site, you can, you can see it. And actually, Mr. Cudero actually had done an initial review on this, so we had already had the 53G account, and I'll let Jason discuss. I, I believe he tried to connect with Mr. Cudero, but it was not successful within the amount of time to kind of see if there was anything else.
But you went into the office, and you get a feel for what the money, and you get the money to Sonia, and you guys are ready to talk between you and Cudero.
Well, it already was there.
It's already happening.
Yeah, so, but, yeah, would you like to just have him discuss?
So go ahead, Mr. Engineer.
How you doing? I'm Jason Youngquist from Outback Engineering, and as Jillian mentioned, this is an existing building with pavement. Pretty much pavement goes right up to the lot lines. Doesn't really meet the zoning requirements at this time.
We went, excuse me, Frasier, interrupting you, but we went through site plan review, I believe, on this site already once, within the last couple of years.
Yes, and it, this application was withdrawn, so it was not.
Okay, so we never finished the site plan, okay.
Correct. I believe you had allowed him to withdraw, and that's why we reapplied. So it is kind of like halfway there, or a little bit more, so, yes, there was an initial review.
Sorry, Jason, that, that, I just wanted.
Got to get it all clear in your head before, so you can see where we're going. So the previous application, we're utilizing all the existing features that are there, and I know that was an issue with the review engineer and, and the zoning board, because we had to request waivers, because it didn't meet the requirements. So the new application, we're bringing all the pavement into conformance with the regulations. We're removing pavement, so we can have the landscape buffers along the side lot lines, along the front lot lines, can shape the entrance to meet the regulations. There's interior landscaping in the paved area proposed to meet the requirements. So essentially, it's going to, it's going to pretty up the site a lot. As you see it now, it's just a paved, you know, paved and flat, and no landscaping. So with the new application, this will enhance the property quite a bit, so we don't have to ask for those waivers anymore, because we're going to bring the site into conformance. The site already has existing utilities.
Rather than ask for waivers and variances, you're going to comply.
Yep, it, you know.
Submissive person.
We have to take out a lot of pavement to meet those regulations, but it'll bring it into conformance, and the, the property already has all its existing utilities, sewer, water, electricity. It has drainage. There's a leaching catch basin in front of the property. There's two catch basins in the back of the property that go to leaching pits. Those are all functioning now, and with the reduction of the pavement, they can, they will continue to function as they have been. Our landscape architect has put together a landscaping plan, as you can see, on sheet two, and this will provide shade trees for the parking lot. It will provide lower shrubs and bushes.
Oh, cool. I see it, yeah.
To enhance screening.
You're putting shrubs all around the, almost the entire perimeter.
Yep. The, the regulation's pretty extensive on what's required, so we've, we've met those requirements for shade trees, for screening trees, for underlying growth, and all our proposed species are native to the area. They're drought resistant, so they, so they will thrive without extensive watering. And, and the applicant, and we all feel that this will be quite the improvement to the existing site.
I can't say I disagree. So it looks like you're doing, you're making a, you're making a center entrance off Toe Road.
Yep.
You're doing both, going down both sides of the property with, I don't know, what is that, eight or 10 feet of shrubbery and mulch and all that?
Yep, I think the requirement's 10 feet, so it's 10 feet.
And, and is it, and then in the back, with, I assume that that shaded area is paved, and then the back non-shaded area is not paved? Is that?
Correct. So the pavement goes around the building, and then there's a, a fenced-in area off the pavement in the back.
And then the fence goes along kind of like a dirt woods road that owned by a neighbor? It's actually not a.
Yep, in the back there, yep, yep, yep.
It's actually an ancient way or something?
Correct.
Okay, I get it. I got it. Does everybody know what this place is? Chris, you know what this place is? This is, this is the old.
Murphy's, is that?
This is, no, this is the old J and R Coen, behind the bank, and then the restaurant over there beside the bank. If you look at this, the restaurant part, piece of this property, and they now wrap around and go behind the bank. It's got nothing to do with this application, but it just kind of, if you look on this front plan here, see this, I think it's 50 feet wide. That, that. Go ahead. So it is stamped, the 24, 10-8-24, so this is the newest plan, 10-8-24 on here?
Correct.
From the landscaper?
Yep.
So it is stamped. So since October, yeah, since October of last year, you've had the plan to put the shrubs up?
Correct.
Okay. So now you're changing, you, you, you earlier said. So now you're changing, you, you earned, you earlier said a change of use.
Variance, use variance.
And I think, did I read automotive?
Yes.
So, so was it an ongoing automotive use that was...
It was a motor vehicle service.
I know what it was prior.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not being used for that now?
No, 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 no. No, this is, um, his space is again for his business.
When you, when you, okay.
The primary use is actually the office.
You've never really formally changed it over to what it's being used as right now?
No.
I, I get it.
We're working on it.
You're working on it. 18 months is a short time when you compare it to dinosaurs and oil.
Yep.
Okay. I'm, um, I'm pleased to see the improvements. So tell me, my memory is that some contractor goes, gets a job to remodel a school and then they hire you to go change the chalkboards to whiteboards and the, um, and the, um, those Chinese things with the wooden things on it to, to, to eye tablets and, you know, they modernize the school and you're the guy that goes in and does it. Take the ink wells out of the desks, that kind of stuff.
Oh, we do mostly new construction, so we currently have jobs from Pittsfield, Mass. to Cape Cod. If you see a new school being built, there's a good chance that we'll be in there doing ceramic flooring. Uh, we do some carpentry and other, but that's what it generally is, is primarily new schools.
Primarily, okay. Okay. So that's what, that's what you came there to do originally, that's what you're doing, but you just want to kind, now you're gonna change up how you use the building? Or is it just that you wanna be a, I'm looking at you because you, I know he doesn't know the answer and you probably do. The percentage of the building that's gonna be warehouse needs to be okayed by us?
Correct. It's over 40%.
And that's what you're here for?
Yes.
Because of the zoning?
The main use is office and the, the exception...
The way our zoning is written, that they, yeah, they have to... Does everybody follow all this jibber jabber?
Yes, and to clarify, because I think I asked this question last time, why, why the primary use wasn't the storages because it's not allowed in the town, correct?
Yeah, and it, and it really isn't. I mean, I don't know if you, if any of them were in the space or whatever, but he has his offices and then it's, there is storage there, but, you know, it's not a storage facility like the new ones you've approved and things like that.
So, and, and then also, I feel like we just wanna, I, it says that there will be no, um, motor vehicle service, but I think, when you were here last time, didn't you talk about you were gonna have some construction vehicles at the site, left there, right?
Yeah, but we won't be servicing, no, the only, those all be serviced by some, we don't do any sort of servicing of vehicles. The inside space we use to bring material in, generally what happens, it comes in, it gets stored there until the building is ready, you know, on all these schools. Then we have our trucks take it out. It's a constant coming in and going out. There'll be a small amount of us taking care of, uh, equipment, which is mostly either flooring or, or a pump or something like that. But no, we're not bringing any vehicles in to do any sort of, we don't think anyone knows how to do that, but look, whatever.
I have no problem with this project. I'm actually glad that you're gonna be up, you know, getting the landscaping, to meet the requirements.
I just want to see what the commissioner had to say, that's what I've been,
Okay.
Before we, any, anything from this side of the room?
Anything over here?
Any lighting changes to the property? I know you're taking out pavement, you're putting nice landscaping in, any, doing any lighting?
We weren't making any changes to the lighting. It was gonna, it was sufficient as it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my only caveat would be that Phil reviews this before we... Oh, actually, isn't this going before the planning board for approval for site review? That's actually what, uh, the letter states.
If it was sent to us, Josh, are you following? Are you, are you off on, are you playing solitaire?
Turner's letter actually says that.
The mind, uh, the mind game?
Oh, the mind, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but no, uh, I'm looking at, um, Paul Turner's letter now. No, it looks like he sent, um, special permit variance to the zoning board, but does not make a reference to site plan review going to planning.
It's a, are you, we read, I just want to read the letter because that's what I read, which is why I was...
The letter dated March 17th. What's the date?
The date on this is March 17th?
Okay.
Says the special granting authority, because, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, for this bylaw shall be the planning board, however, that where the applicable development requires a special permit, comprehensive permit or variance from the Board of Appeals, the special granting authority, uh, shall be the Board of Appeals. Special permits, uh, shall be granted, um, oop, it's not in that one.
Keep going on the back page, back side. Read here, read here. Shall be the zoning board of appeals in dark print.
Yeah, but I read that the planning board is going to approve the site plan.
You have to read the whole sentence.
Issuance of a special permit from the planning board for site plan review.
Yes.
That's the first paragraph, right? So, number of parking spaces required of section required, 10 or more parking spaces regardless of the number of parking spaces listed on the permit shall be permitted only upon the issuance of a special permit from the planning board for site plan review.
This is that standard language that they have in there? So, yes, if there's no variances or anything, it's going to go through that planning board. But this has it, if they're, at the very end, like Mr. Akabachi said, because we have that...
You've gotta keep reading, there's more.
Well, because I know also, I thought that that, what is,
I know what kind of...
When is the planning board doing the site plan reviews?
You're gonna get some knives, some steak knives?
I just want to make sure we're not...
I just want to make sure we're...
Keep reading, keep reading.
Okay.
Because if you keep going and if you turn the page over.
In addition to any development of any type on 30 acres or greater shall be subject to Section 1510. A special permit shall be granted only if the special permit granting authority finds that it's consistent with the purposes outlined in Section 1510 of this bylaw. So, the special grant, the special granting authority under Section 1510 of the bylaw shall be the planning board.
Provided.
Provided.
Here's the key word, provided.
However, that where the applicable development requires a special permit, comprehensive permit or variance from the Board of Appeals, the special permit granting authority under 1510 of this bylaw shall be the Board of Appeals. Special permits under this section shall be granted only in conformance with the Section 1510, the zoning bylaw requirements. So I understand that we're giving this special permit for the use change. My question is, because I know I've been told this at Town Hall, what, so where, when does the planning board come into reference when they're doing site plan reviews? Because wasn't that a recent change that didn't get changed back? How?
It was a recent change, uh, not at our two prior town meetings, but the one before that. Paul has been, uh, sending new denial letters out for the projects that were issue, or were retroactively affected by that change. So, and that, and the only reason I bring it up here is this does not look like one of his, uh, retroactive letters.
Okay, okay, I just want to make sure that we're, we don't tell you, you're all set, and then you get to the building department and they're like, you're not...
Since we're gonna try to make it totally confusing, just so you know, it was, it was planned to be on the last town meeting to revert the language back to the prior po, position. And it didn't make it because the planning board, um, failed to have a quorum the night that it was open for public hearing. But it will be on the town meeting, the next town meeting to, to amend that so that it becomes, um, less clear.
Okay, so, so my only comment, which led me into that, was, um, in terms of site plan review, um, I would like to have Phil Cudero take a look at things before I think we make a vote.
They've already got, they've already got it in process. They've got a 53G account set up and they've already been in communication. So we just won't vote tonight. We'll just tell them, thanks for coming in, and they'll get out. Or something like that, you know? We'll do it, we'll, we'll do it in nicer words.
Okay.
Follow through, Jim, follow through.
Follow through. Follow through, okay.
Be nice.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm supposed to be nice. All right. Thanks for coming in. No, we're not, we're not done with you, oh, you kidding? Uh, any questions? Over this way, any questions over this way? Is anybody in the room or on Zoom that has any questions regarding this application that would like to be heard at this time? Okay, we're not closing the public portion of this meeting. Because you're in communication with the town engineer, I'm suggesting that we continue until all communications between the engineers, uh, you know, we've got to find out who won the arm wrestling fight.
If we could continue till 5:28?
5:28 would be, would work for you?
Yep, so next meeting.
I have a motion, I have a request, and I need a motion to continue to 5:28.
I move we continue to 5:28.
A motion's been made by Mr. Conti to continue this matter till 5:28.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Simple, all in favor? Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Debonese?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Rick?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And this Mr. and Mrs. stuff is just, you know, too formal for me. It trips me up. Thank you, you, you're, um, thank you for coming in.
Yes.
You may leave. Or you may stay. But you just can't stay sitting there. Thank you. And thank you, the plan looks good. Thank you, I'm glad it's working for you. Anything there? I like that landscaping plan.
It looked nice.
Yeah, it looks, it's gonna, that's a big improvement to something that was kind of, you know...
All pavement.
Well, not only that, it was, it's a, it's a, it's a much better, it's a much better use of that property in that part of town. When you come out of the convenience store right across the street on Tow Road, you look, you kind of look over, you see that, you...
It is a little barren over there, yeah.
Right now, yeah, it's gonna look, it's gonna look, yeah, it's a, it's really, um, good that either our bylaws are working or our foolishness is making people aggravated and they're doing things to make the town look nice.
I don't know, this doesn't look the same.
It doesn't look great, it's a new one, I'm gonna read it. And this is gonna be, um, 1325, Zone 2518, Frederick and Marilyn Strasser, I think, whatever it says here. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in, is this the wrong thing?
Uh, just extra.
Just what?
Extra.
Okay. I'm sorry, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on May 14th, 2025, 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Do consider petition number 13-25 slash zoning 25-18 for a special permit or permits from the requirements of Article 6, Table 622 and 628 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Frederick and Marilyn Strasser of 25 Gale Road, Framingham, Farmington, I'm sorry, Connecticut, proposing to demolish the existing dwelling and replace with a new single-story ranch-style dwelling located at 20 Longwood Avenue, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map 1, Lot 567 in the OV2, Onset Village 2 zoning district. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Dennis Conry appearing in behalf of Frederick and Mary Ellen Strasser. I have, I didn't, my office didn't file this petition with your order, but, or, or with your office, but I have now, uh, come into the case. When I was reviewing the case before tonight, I, I determined that it would probably be very useful to the board to have some pictures of, of this house. So I took the opportunity to...
Thank you.
To make up five, five sets of pictures.
Thank you.
So I'll refer to them in my remarks.
Okay.
Essentially, what they, what they focus on is the size of the lots in this, in this neighborhood and the closeness of the, uh, the residence. Although all of you are familiar with Longwood Avenue and Onset, uh, as, as I was, until I had something to focus my attention on this property, I, I didn't notice all the things that I, that were present that I think...
You've noticed a lot more now that you gotta argue for it.
Something like that, yeah, so. Mary Ellen and Fred Strasser are the current owners of a single-family residence situated on 20 Longwood Avenue, Onset. The Strassers tonight are requesting the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals to grant a special permit to allow them to demolish the existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling that will accommodate themselves, their two children, uh, and their soon-to-be two grandchildren. Mary Ellen and, and Fred reside in Farmington, Connecticut, and have owned the property at 20 Longwood Avenue since purchasing it from Mary Ellen's mother in 2017. Mary Ellen's mother had purchased the home at 20 Longwood Avenue in 1991. Mary Ellen's father and mother originally owned property down the street at 65 Longwood Avenue, which they purchased in 1966. From 1966 to the present, Mary Ellen has been coming to Onset in the summertime. Mary Ellen and Fred have two children and will surely be blessed with a, a second grandchild. They want to share Onset.
Oh, they're not having two grandchildren, they already got one, they're getting another one.
Right, one, one is on the way.
Didn't know if it was twins or if they had two kids that, you know, went to the same party or what?
The existing structure on, on Lot 20
Yeah.
is a 125-year-old, six-room seasonal cottage with three bedrooms, one and a half bathrooms. The front portion of the structure sits on three brick and mortar piers that are badly deteriorated. The back portion of the cottage, the kit, containing the kitchen and the bath, has no foundation at all. The cottage is sinking into the sand. Most of the houses in the neighborhood have all been updated and, uh, and actually made, made quite a bit larger, as is, as is the, uh, the custom at the present time. The lot at 20 Longwood Avenue in Onset is in Onset zoning district OV2 and contains 3,500, 35 square feet, which is less than the required 10,000 square feet minimum in the, in the zoning area. The site plan provided to the board shows the current setbacks on the rear, front, and one side are less than the setbacks provided for in the zoning district. So in the, the site plan shows the, as, as we usually do in these cases, the new structure superimposed over the existing structure, so...
I'm gonna stop you for one second. When you say site plan, I assume you're referring to this.
Okay, he's got it in black and white.
I've got a black and white, eight and a half by 11.
Okay.
I can tell you that our chair is gonna require a full set of plans. Is that it? You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, that's why I stopped you, I just wanted to...
As I said, I wasn't involved initially, so...
No, no, if Massey, Massey wants this, when he's...
Okay, well, yeah, that's the only one he can read because this is in color and it, there's different colors between the existing structure and, and the proposed structure.
You say superimposed and everything, I was looking at this black and white thing.
I'm sorry, I, I did...
That's all right, that's okay, you're good. Does anybody else want to see this now that I've? Okay, go ahead, keep, keep reading. I saw it was three pages, you're still on page one, right?
So, yeah. But I'm quick, you know, so.
Okay.
The Strassers have attempted to repair the existing structure and have investigated their options and are now determined that there is no economically viable way that they can bring the existing structure built 125 years ago up to the standards which people now are willing to accept and live in. The Strassers are now seeking to replace the existing structure with a one-story, three-bedroom structure that will allow them to use the home all year round, although they're not moving to Wareham permanently yet, they're both, they're both still working. That, that's, that, that's probably in the future. That's, that's probably in the future. But they wanna come up and visit the, the house during the winter and there's, it really isn't winterized at the moment and never has been. It'll also afford them the convenience of not having to go upstairs as they progress, as they progress towards retirement. The proposed structure will be built off-site. It'll, it's gonna be a modular home and moved onto the foundation, which will significantly decrease the amount of disruption to the serenity in the neighborhood that would normally occur if there were a traditional stick-built house built over a period of several months. Section 1355 of the Wareham zoning bylaw provides a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming, single- or two-family residential structure may, by special permit, be demolished and replaced with a new structure on the same site, provided that the zoning board of appeals determines that the replacement structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, the replacement structure will not cause or contribute to any undue noise, hazard, congestion in the neighborhood zoning district, the replacement structure will not intensify the following existing nonconformities, building coverage, impervious coverage, and setback encroachment. The replacement structure will not create any new nonconformities. So, the plot plan that you've just looked at shows the building and the proposed, the existing building and the proposed building. What it doesn't show is the five houses that are around, that are butters to, to the Strasser's house. And the pictures show that the, that a joint, a budding houses are almost built, are built within four feet of the lot line and on the left-hand side of the building, and that's what shows in the pictures, it shows the left-hand side of the building. The house on the left is only 16 inches from the, from the lot line. The house behind that is only 18 inches from the Strasser's lot line. Over on the right-hand side of the house, the house is only, is only four feet from the lot line. So, these houses, that, that's the nature of this neighborhood. Everybody gets along okay or great, and I, I, I hope and I assume. But that's what we're dealing with, a very different animal than what, what we have today as far as housing. So, I, I, I think that the, the drafters of the zoning bylaw and this particular article had this in mind because if the, if the zoning requirements were strictly adhered to, it would make it very difficult, if not impossible, to update some of these houses. The, the key point of, of this case is those four houses around the Strasser's home are built on lots that are half the size of the Strasser lot. And the, the last page of my submission contains a portion of the assessor's map to show our lot in question and to show the four lots around it. And they're also two-story houses. The Strassers don't wanna build a, a large expensive house. All they want is the basic minimum to, to suit their, their relatively small family. They need three bedrooms, they wanna be on one floor. The proposed structure is only 1,224 square feet. The existing two, two-story or one and a half story, it was built 125 years ago, was a story and a half. The new building is only gonna be probably 18 feet tall. So, most of the time, in my recent experience, when, when we're dealing with houses coming into, into waterfront communities like Onset, people wanna build, build tall structures right up to the 35-foot minimum and that has the result, a, a negative impact on, on the neighbors. It shades some of, shades them out and, and it, and it looks like an eyesore. So, I submit, this is a very modest request. It's necessary because this house is sinking into the ground. Fred solicited opinions from many builders 'cause he wanted to save the house originally. He wanted to put a foundation under it and, and lift it up.
Well, you could spend twice as much doing it that way.
That's the reason why we went this way.
It, it, it doesn't make any sense. So, now, so they love, they love Onset, they love to come up here, they wanna share it with their family. The, this is the only solution. And, and they can move a lot quicker with the modular home. But there's a picture of the, of the proposed home that's attached to the, to the, it's behind the, the submission that Fred and Mary Ellen made. The last couple pages show the, a, a one-story dwelling.
You handed out tonight, or?
Excuse me?
The handout that you just gave us?
No, not what I just gave you, no, in, in the back of the plan, at least the back of the plan that Mary Ellen sent me, or of the, of the application, as part of the application.
Okay. I'll find it.
Chris has got it, yeah.
Okay.
So the longest, longest part of this whole process will be taking down the old one, putting a new foundation in, the modular home will just come in, drop down on it, and you'll be done? Less height?
Yeah, that, the demolishing should take about, I'm Fred Strasser, by the way.
Thank you.
A demolishing should be
A day?
A day.
Blow on it?
Yeah.
So, so the, the demolishing and the replacement will go quicker than this presentation?
Oh.
I resembled that remark.
I thought you did a fantastic job with all the pictures. I thought you did a great job, but you know, Moni, you know, you know, I have great respect for Mr. Conry. And, and no, I like it when people give us a full, so I meant it in, in all respect, but is this gonna come in one piece or two?
Two.
Two.
So it'll fit down the street and then you put it together at the ridge?
13 feet wide each, right? Two, two pieces?
Yeah, I believe they're 13, 13 wide.
Yeah, 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 they come with, you know, an over width permit, they
Yep.
they fit down the street, they put them together, some guy puts the ridge cap on and they go, they go inside and they spread a little spackle and
Yeah, 'cause everything breaks on the way, as I'm told.
Yeah, yeah, they never move in the same day, but they're, they're close to it.
Yep.
I've watched, yeah. They even have a special machine now that moves it from the street to the site. Looks like a, you know, you, and, but anyway. Are you done?
I'm done.
Thank you. I'm joking with you. Any questions from the board? I kinda understand the whole thing and for what it's worth, I think it's a good project, so.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment.
A comment, go ahead.
So, I have a lot of issues with how development is in Onset 'cause looking and walking through Onset, I sometimes get really aggravated at the oversized houses that are there, these small lots, and it's just a hodgepodge. It seems like everybody does exactly what they want to do in Onset. If you go to a lot of other towns, small little villages, they look nothing like ours. And I feel like if we continue to ignore our zoning bylaws, and that's the reason why I feel like it looks like it does because, you know, we allow things to happen without hardships. This case in particular, the house that's here, and when I look at, on this site plan, it has front setback, side setback, rear setback. The required front setback being 9.8, existing is 9.9. The side and the rear are 10-foot. It says the existing conditions are 9.3. I'm assuming that was an attempt to be 10. And then the back, this shows a shed, so it looks like the house was actually built with conformity, but then there was a request probably at some point where they, they added on a shed. Where this is a completely new build, I just don't understand why not working within the boundaries. I mean, it's not like you have to do something because it's gonna cost more to do a little this or that because it's an existing structure and you're trying to make it fit. I mean, the, the house could be, it's, right now on paper, it's showing 27 by 46. It could be 24 by 46 and, you know, the, the setbacks, or it could jog in and the setbacks would meet what's required. I just, looking at the neighbors and stuff, I just don't see that as a hardship because everybody else has done it in the neighborhood. And, and I'm sorry to say that, but that's just how I feel about this project. I feel like there could be slight modifications and a beautiful house could be put on this lot and conform.
Could I respond?
Yeah.
So, the, I, I assume you're, you're looking at the, at the, as, as you're on Longwood Avenue, the back right corner of the house?
Yeah, 4.9.
Yeah. And, and so, one, one, so the house that's on that side is closer than that to the sideline. That's 20, that, that's, that's 22 Longwood Avenue. And our house is at 20 Longwood Avenue. And in the front, it has adequate frontage or setback from the front. So it's the shape of this lot that, that makes it difficult to put our house on that lot. And, and that, and, and the, the house next door is four feet from the boundary line, which is, so, I, I, I talked to Fred when I, when I looked at this plan and I said, can we slide the house away from
It's good, the difference type thing, yeah, yeah.
And, and the, the zoning bylaw says that you can, as long as you, that, one of the sections, and I'll summarize, as long as it's five feet, not less than five feet, that, that, that the, the setback is. So, and I said to myself, why didn't the engineer at least bring it to five feet some way, somehow? But, so, but I, and I, and I said, maybe we can slide this house or this lot, this house up, so it'll be closer to the, to the other side. And, and I, then I understand here, well, why can't it be smaller? Well, if you take two feet off of this house, it's only one floor. It's only a 1,200-square-foot house to start with, that, that's quite a bit of space, actually.
Two times 46 is 100 square feet. Well, 92.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that, and then it, it'll just be less non-conforming.
So five feet, what, what is the setback in, in that?
10 feet.
Is it, is it 10 feet? And you don't have 10 feet on either side?
I guess like we have it on the, on the north side, I guess you'd say.
Oh, you got, you got 10 feet on the other side, but what was the five?
And that, that shed is gonna be, be raised.
I get you, you're getting
That's coming down and the back, and the back shed that, that Veronica pointed out is, was probably added on, it wasn't added on by, by
It's that, it's that one corner that's got 4'9" that I get, I get, and what was your reference to five feet?
In the, in the de minimis,
With it?
The de minimis section, I think. They talk about it can be lowered to, to not less than five feet of setback.
So there's, so the, our, our prior wise scrivlers of our bylaws put something in there that said that if you can get it down to five feet, it's, it's more palatable.
Under section 3, 1390.
So four feet, nine inches, if we could make it four feet, 12 inches for three more inches?
So let me ask you a question. Is it possible to have the house moved to the center of the lot rather than 10 on one side and five on the other so that you're breaking it down the middle and you're more like seven and a half from each of the sides?
I, I looked at that, but then I couldn't have a driveway and I'm looking to have par, off-street parking as well.
Gotta get off the street in, in Onset.
So where are you putting your driveway on the?
On the north side.
Okay. So if we moved it three inches, when you open your door, you'd be bumping your house?
Right, and there's a fence going along there, yep.
Just playing devil's, to, to further belabor this point, if you kept the west or the front of the house, right where it is, and then just pivot it on the northwest corner, three inches, and brought the northeast corner, three inches closer. If you just, three inches on, keep the front so that you got your driveway and move the drawing, you only, it's, it's easy to move a line on a piece of paper, three inches. But once that house is there, and you try to open, you, the gas cap on your car, if it's on the wrong side of the car, they can't siphon your gas. But I get it, would, if, if they moved the house three inches, would it be more palatable?
You mean, well, you wanna probably face the same as your neighbors, right? You want it to be angled, you talking about the angle? I, I don't wanna belabor, if you guys are, are fine with this and you wanna move to vote, go ahead. I'm, I'm okay with that.
You know, I'm not, for three inches, I'm
Three inches?
For three
No, I was talking about feet.
Huh?
But that's okay.
For three inches, for three inches, I'm like, I'm just, you know, I'm just frankly, look, I've driven down Longwood Avenue a couple of times and
I guess it just surprises me.
We're gonna get to a point where we're gonna invite the neighbors and, and if that three inches meant a lot to the person on Lot 568-B, which is the corner where the 4.9 inches is and three inches would make you happy, or make it more palatable, if that person from Lot 568-B comes up and says, I hate this plan, then I wanna hear them. But when we open it to the public, if they don't come up and say it, I think we've had a lot of discussion about three inches.
I don't know where you're getting three inches, but continue.
Well, because, because our bylaw says that it's, if it's within, if you can get it within five feet.
He wouldn't be here if it were okay.
No, you still have
If it were, if it were, if it were part of the bylaw, he wouldn't be before us.
Oh, okay. Your point is well-made.
And then to go by, when I went by, the, the houses next door and around them, they, some of them are gonna be 75 to 80% covered, lot coverage.
Yep.
So, and they're, and they're also bringing it down, you're also bringing it down.
Small house.
I, I, I think it's a good project. And just curious, if you come down tonight and go by H&M Grinders and not bring any down?
Go, go to, which grinders?
Do you know H&M Grinders?
I do not.
Oh, boy, I think you better look that up.
Okay, all right, because I've been, I've been looking for a decent grinder.
That's from Connecticut?
Yep, you won't get a better, bigger grinder than your life, just down past after the, the airport.
In, oh, in Connecticut?
On Route 5, yep.
In Connecticut.
Oh, jeez, no, 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 I'm on the other side of the river.
Yeah, I know, you're on, you're down, you're down, you're downside from Hartford and they're on the upside from Hartford. Just wondering, you come through, I didn't know if you came through Route 5 and went down there, Bradley International Airport and all that.
Right, H&M, I'll have to keep that one in mind.
And I think it's worth your start. So anyway, let's go on.
So.
Has the public, yeah.
Yeah.
Public.
Anybody else on the board with concerns or comments at this point? Anybody in the, in the room or on Zoom raising their hand that has any comments? You're not on Zoom, but you're in the room, come on up, state your name.
My name is George Coolidge.
Speak it to, you gotta do it to a microphone because it's everything, you know.
My name is George Coolidge, I'm Fred's neighbor.
Okay.
I'm on 10-8th Street in Longwood on the corner.
Okay.
And then Fred's right here.
Are you a budding or are you just in the neighborhood?
I'm a budding.
You're, you're, you have, you have a common property line?
Yep, yeah.
Neighbors to the right.
You're the neighbors to the right?
It would be to the left.
If I stand on the street facing the house?
It would be to the left.
No, that'd be the left.
Pardon me?
If he stands at his front door to the right.
If I stand in his front door and look at the street, you're on the right?
Correct.
Okay.
What's the address?
10-8th.
10-8th Street.
Okay.
The only concerns I have is I know they're gonna be tearing it down and adding a new house or whatever and I don't, I don't have like any water in my cellar or anything like that anymore, whatever. Is there, should I have any concerns about any like water lines or gas lines or whatever when they take this down if it, you know?
No, I think there's a rule that says before they tear the house down, they have to call this company called DigSafe.
Yeah.
And DigSafe comes out and they mark everything in the street where the water lines, where the gas lines are, where the pipeline going to the airport with JP4 is, everything. It all gets marked, the sewer lines. And then they're not allowed to dig them up. Or they have to, you know, repair them if they do. But, so, should you be concerned? Sure, you should always be concerned. You start getting big, heavy equipment in the neighborhood, they start digging, you know? Get a bad operator, he swings the boom, he puts it through the windshield of your car.
Yeah, or the house or whatever.
Those things, those things happen.
We're not, like you were saying, we're so close, we're so close or whatever.
So, are you guys close enough, like, if they need sugar, can you pass it to them from your?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah. And do you get along?
Yeah.
Are you afraid of them?
What, the sugar?
Think this guy's destructive?
The sugar, you mean?
Are you going to be running the backhoe?
I'll be running, I'll be running the backhoe.
You, you operate?
I'll be running the backhoe.
You operate equipment?
Yes.
All right, so is equipment operated? Do you think it's likely that the person doing the digging, tearing that house down, is going to wreck your house?
It may, probably.
They probably will?
Yeah.
Okay, what company do you work for so I know who not to hire? Thank you. What else, what other comments do you have?
Nothing, I was just more concerned about, you know, like, how it's being taken down and, because they're so close to houses and all that.
I think, I think that there'll be an order of conditions that, you know...
I don't know what, you know, this is the first time I've run across this.
Okay.
And George's wife, we want Fred to have...
Who are you?
Jackie Coolidge, George's wife.
You're the woman that's not in front of one of the microphones that wants to be heard but doesn't want to be recorded?
Yeah, we want him to have what he wants. I'm glad that it's going to be one story instead of two, gives us more light and all. I'm just concerned about protecting our asset, like, our house is 100 years old too. So, like you said, all the digging, the banging, do we need, we haven't even had an easy time getting insurance. So, just worried about damage to our property. What they do is whatever they want to do, as far as I'm concerned.
So, you don't object, you're just here to make sure that they don't hurt your house?
I was hoping for some guidance because I, we have no clue about houses.
Find out when they're doing it, go on vacation for two weeks. When you come back, life will be good. And, and you, and, you know, if they hurt something while you're gone, maybe, maybe the fire department will call you and tell you when the fire's out.
Who will come after you?
You come after me.
Who will be after you?
You'll be after me, Bo. If it happens, I can tell you where I'll be.
Okay.
And it'll be a long ride.
It will?
Yeah. But anyway, oh, kidding aside, any other concerns?
No, I don't think so.
Anybody else in the room that would like to be heard? Have you got any hands up on Zoom over there, John?
No, it's done.
Okay. At this time, is there any reason for us not to make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
So, the motion's been made to close the public portion of this hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Conti. All in favor? Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Public portion of this hearing is closed. Would anybody on the board like to make a motion to either approve or deny this application? And if so, with any conditions?
I make a motion to approve this hearing, this project as presented. Just to be careful with the condition of, be careful with the neighbors' foundation.
Don't get any water in their basement.
Their assets need to be assured.
Can you do that? Can you try to be careful not to, if you?
We've got a pretty good...
You know the houses are close, if you run your sprinklers, face them at your own lawn, please. That's the motion. The motion is to grant, as requested. And it's seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Troy. All in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Denied.
Denied. Myself, grant. Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
4-1-0, you're approved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
House, dear.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
Never been seen again.
Now, that would not be a good idea.
You should see.
Get a half a glass. Never mind it, thank you. Everything is fantastic.
So, where are these subs, what town?
It's in, right next to Bradley International Airport.
Oh, I know where Bradley is.
So, you're just, if you're going down the road, it's on the left-hand side after the airport. It's unbelievable.
Are they expensive?
A half sub is this big, a whole sub is this big.
Wow. Get one in share with two people?
More than that. I get, I get one, everybody in the family gets a piece. Four pieces.
Cut them up in pieces, okay, that was strasser, okay. Next up is... Next up is, did Nazir ever sign in, John?
No.
Okay.
Imagine we'd see his face if he did sign in. So, we're on Cleveland Way?
I think we're on...
1425?
1425, Robert Dussette, variance or a special permit, 47 Cleveland Way. You're up. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May 14, 2025, at 6:30 PM in Room 520 of the Wyam Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wyam, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 14-25, Zone 25-19, for variance or a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Section 1352 and 1353, under the Wyam zoning bylaws, to Robert W. Dussette, care of Brian Grady of GAF Engineering, Inc., of 266 Main Street, Wyam, Mass., proposing lateral addition and second-floor addition at the dwelling located at 47 Cleveland Way, Wyam, Mass. This appears on Wyam assessor's map 7B2, Lot 10, in the R30 zoning district. Go ahead, sir.
Evening, thank you, Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
I'm George Kiedis, GS Design Group.
Okay, what do you got?
Try and keep my remarks brief.
Thanks, we'll make it long.
I hope so. So, what the applicant's looking to do here is, there's an existing garage on the site that will be razed. A lateral addition will be put on that will comply...
Lateral addition to the primary house?
Yes.
Okay.
That will comply with the setbacks. The reason we're here is there's a second-floor addition going on. The existing home is non-compliant to the sideline setback. So, the second floor will be an increase in the volume of that non-compliance. So, that's the purpose that we're here. We like to think that this falls under the special permit. The, we do not consider this to be a detriment to the neighborhood, more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, we feel that it can be approved through the process of a special permit. This home, the assessors has this home as being constructed in 1919. The subdivision, the lots, were created in 1913. So, it is an older neighborhood. Mr. Dussette's lot is on the water side, it's on the easterly side of Cleveland Way. Lots on that side are in the neighborhood of 7,400 square feet. On the westerly side, that 1913 plan, the subdivision, the lots are approximately 3,100, 3,500 square feet. So, it's typically one of the larger lots in the neighborhood, but it's very typical for the neighborhood. So, again, we like to think that this can be approved through the special permit process as it's not a detriment to the neighborhood. George has some pictures and some other attachments for you to take a view. And so, you can see some of the other similar homes in the neighborhood.
So, I have, before you go, I have a question. On this, what do you call it, locus, whatever, this, it shows where Lot 10 would be. It shows 9 and 11 and where the 10 would be, it's kind of all fuzzied out and everything. Have, are 9, 10, and 11 all one lot now?
No. No, I think you're looking at the butters list.
The AGIS, yeah, this.
Yeah, that's what the assessors prepares, that's the butters list.
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah. Okay, so 10 is, the, the, on this plan, Lot 10 doesn't show, 9 and...
It'd be the one that's faded out.
So, I do 9 or 11, you know, have their...
Yeah, George has a GIS that'll make it a little clearer for you.
I'll keep turning pages. Go ahead, George, go ahead, I didn't mean to...
So, I'm going to bring this up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you got an extra one, okay. Give it, give it to him. He was being, he was sharing.
Well, we're going to, we're going to want to go in there.
Yeah.
So, the first image is basically a rendered elevation. And it's just to show that the building height, the new height, is 24 feet and 1 1/2 inches. That wasn't on the specified lines that we sent you. So, if you, the second sheet is the GIS maps. 47 Cleveland is in yellow. And then the pink lots are correlated with the photographs. There's the lot number. And then, if you turn the page, you'll see the photographs. And we tried to find houses that were, you know, in the scale and size. The whole area is very eclectic. There's, there are one-story little cottages. So, we just took photographs that showed that the size and scale and what we're proposing fits within the neighborhood.
It's, um... It's interesting to me because, isn't it Wyam that was Nepanai Keke? Isn't that something that was on a high school class ring? And it was Indian for summer home?
Is that what it means? I don't know.
Yeah, that's what it means. See, I am an old bastard, aren't I?
I'm a falmofgat, I don't know.
Okay, so, Wyam, before even I was born, a long time ago, the Indians used to use Wyam as their summer home. This was known as the summer home. And over the years, you know, like everywhere else in the country, we got rid of the Indians and brought in the Cowboys. But it was still summer homes. So, it was to be, you know, you go all over Wyam, including Cleveland's, and these were all summer homes because they existed before the invention of air conditioning. And when the summer came, it got hot and people moved towards the water. So, that's why we have these eclectic neighborhoods, to use your term. And I, I find it pretty interesting to see how they've changed over the years. Your pictures are, speak volumes to me. So, this gentleman wants to tear down his detached garage?
Correct.
And make his house a little bit bigger and park the cars outdoors after going forward? That's a good use of a garage because, you know, I had a garage and for the first two or three years, there were cars in it. Now, there's so much crap in it, the building should be torn down.
Well, it's an older garage, I don't think we could get today's cars.
I can beat you, mine was 1860. Yours was 1913, so... So, anyway, I understand, I look, I appreciate, I can relate to pictures much better than words. So, appreciate the pictures. Any questions from the board?
So, I guess I have a comment to make. From the building commissioner's letter. He states 628, he states side rear setback 10-foot. But I'm not sure where he's talking about on this. This says 10-2 for the new addition from the side lot. I know there's a pre-existing non-conforming 4.9 on the other side. So, I don't see you having an issue with the side setback, that's pre-existing, right?
So, where's the?
Probably because he's adding a second floor onto it, that's why.
He's touching it, so that's...
Yeah, the non-conformity would be the second floor, correct? But we're not increasing this.
They're not, they're not getting any closer to the sideline, they're just getting taller.
I get it.
And, and it's been previously argued that going taller is increasing the non-conformity.
I get it.
So, they're asking for permission to do that. That basically...
Correct.
The main reason you're here is because, is to get permission to go up. And you need, and you need an okay to tear the garage down. Do you? Do you need our permission to tear? You asking, you asking, is it okay?
No, the zoning letter, Paul Turner's letter is only talking about the second-floor addition, increasing the non-conformity.
Increasing the non-conformity. That's why you're here. The raising, he can grant that without us.
That's a demolition, correct.
That's it, okay.
So, it's up to us to figure out what we want to give them.
It's up to us to decide if we want to let this guy get high.
Hey, you're...
Go higher. Yes.
I'm okay with this project. I'd like to just hear anybody in the audience.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions over here?
None.
Richard? Anybody in the room or on Zoom that has any questions or comments? I see a hand come up, please come up and speak into the microphone, state your name and, and your, you.
Yes. Hello, thank you, Michael Moran, a butter, 58 Cleveland.
A butter?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So, in the, in the case of the height variance, it is, in my particular case, in my property, and based on the fact that my house is situated a certain way, it will negatively impact the property value of my, of my home.
Okay. So, I always ask the same question of anybody that has your concern. In the applicant's deed, do you own a deed restriction in his deed that restricts him from impacting your view? Do you have a view easement?
So, I don't actually know whether I have that or not.
If you had it, you'd know.
Okay. So, that's right. So, I only found out about the project until tonight. And so, I just suppose that answers that question.
Bylaws provide that the, the board should always consider the neighbors and the neighbors' views and all that. But I just always like to make it perfectly clear to anybody that comes up that the difference between being considerate and rights are worlds apart.
Right, that I understand.
When you buy property, you buy property, it comes with a bundle of rights. And amongst that bundle of rights, you can sell or transfer rights to other parties. He could, he could sell the right of part of his property to you to never be built on for a fee. He could take money and say, for $5, I'll never build on the three feet on my left border.
Right.
And then that goes in his deed, and you have an easement, a view easement, or an easement. But if you had it, you'd know. But, so your, your point is that you're, and a butter, you're not a waterfront property, you're across the street, or you're...
That is correct, I'm 58, so I'm across...
And across the street, but a butter. So, you actually abut the street and the street abuts?
That's right.
Okay. And so, when you look across the street, right now, you look across the street between his house and somebody else's house, or?
Roughly, and generally above what now is the garage.
You can look over the top of his house?
For the most part, my house is in fact two-story.
Your house is two-story?
So, in general, it's, it's not a problem unless their house is also two-story.
Unless their house what?
Also becomes two-story, then it becomes a problem.
So, your house is a single-story now? Okay, okay, I missed that. Okay, okay, I missed that, I thought that part, a part of your house was already two stories and you were just, okay.
No, but if I could just
No, go ahead.
I believe he said, I understand his concern with the increase in height, I think he said, we're here for height variance, we're not.
No.
We comply with the height, we, I think we're at 24 feet, George said, 35 is allowed.
No, yeah, you don't need a variance for the height, you conform to the height, you've got a minimum 35 feet, you can go up to, what height are you going to?
24.
24, so you're still 10 feet under the height you could go to. 11 feet.
Well, it dips down in the, in the water side, so it would be an average, might be 32.
Yeah.
But we're at 24, one and a half inches.
From the, from grade, from the ground up to the peak?
From the front, yep.
You're 24 feet?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, so it's not from the height, it, it's not for the height, it's for what, the width?
The, the, the side of the house is on, too close to the property line, so it makes any addition on that little part, non-conforming.
I see, okay, so actually, I assume, because I only found out through like a small blurb and a mailing that I get isn't a butter. I mean, I'm not an unreasonable person, so having never seen, right.
So the garage right now is over here, and we're getting rid of that, so you're gonna have a little bit more of a view there.
Right.
And we've attached the addition.
And this is gonna be two stories?
Nope, nope, that's, that's the roof right here, it's one story. It's just, it's directly over the existing house.
Okay.
And your house is a little to the skew, so you still have that view.
That's correct, so actually, that's good news, in particular, it looks like, and I was going to suggest that if the goal for the property owner was to increase interior usage square area, that they could go up with the existing structure, and that's in fact what they're doing.
Exactly what he's doing.
Yeah, unfortunately, the
When you're sitting out there and you're listening, you can't, you can't
Well, even the mailing I got, the wording suggested that there was, the garage was gonna become two-story.
I like pictures, so, yeah, I get it.
So this is, this is excellent.
You can do a Roseanne, Roseanne Adana and say, never mind, and go sit down.
Well, now that I see the actual drawings, right, it helps, it helps a lot.
Well, that's good.
They should include those at the mailings.
That's good, thank you, and thank you for your comments, thank you, sir, for coming up.
And thank you for the clarification.
All right. Anybody else get any comments or questions? Is it a good time to close the public portion of this hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
We have the motion by Veronica Debonese to close the public portion of this hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Veronica and seconded by Chris Conti, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay, well, no, that, that's just selling, that's just saying that nobody can talk but us, now we get to vote. That's just, public input is done. The board can say, we want two weeks to think it over, or somebody can make a motion and say, I make a motion to grant relief per request. Or they can all just sit here and try to think about what they want to do, but usually when I chair, I try not to make the motions.
Do we have to make a motion that it's non-detrimental?
If, you can make a motion you can make a motion that you don't believe it is detrimental to the neighborhood and that it could be treated as a special permit.
That's my motion.
Do I have a second to treat it as a special permit?
Second.
Seconded by Richard, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Okay, so you don't need a variance, you need a special, we're granting you, we're saying that this can be done as a special permit. We've just agreed, we voted on it, this can be treated as a special permit, which is less restrictive on you on times and so forth, how, how, how how close we hold your feet to the fire on performance and stuff.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
And we have a motion to approve, I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Troy, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
You said you were gonna be brief, you were.
He was, you weren't.
I, well, I told you I'd try, yeah, I told you I'd try to drag it out.
But we did learn, we did learn a little history lesson about kicking the Indians out and bringing the Cowboys in.
Nepanai Keket, when you go to Wayham High School and you buy your $89 high school class ring.
I think they're not $89 anymore.
It says Nepanai Keket, right there, look at that.
You weren't lying.
That's Indian for summer home.
Learning something every day, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
You did second that one, right? You seconded a permit?
Troy seconded it, I got it.
Troy then?
All right. That was Doucette, right?
Yes, the next one is 1525, Marsha Joseph.
So Veronica made the motion to approve, Troy seconded.
And you're making notes over there too? And you're making notes who motioned and who didn't, and so, thank you.
He probably has better note, he's got a notebook.
Pardon me?
His notes are gonna be better, he's got a notebook.
Yeah, but I don't know if he turns them in, he keeps them till he can review the minutes, I don't want to turn them in to Veronica because okay, 1525, Marsha Joseph, use variance, 2297 Cranberry Highway. We cleared the room for you.
Thank you.
Hang on, I gotta read you in, Marsha. Are you Marsha?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
We're gonna have to figure that one out. We'll agree to what the writers said. We can see what Veronica had.
The zoning board of appeal to hold a public hearing on May 14, 2025, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Monthly Service on 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 15-25 or zone 25-10 for a use variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320. Under the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Marsha Joseph of 139 Wayham Lake Shores Drive, East Wayham, Mass. Wayham, Mass, seeking to ref, in the form of use variance for a food truck located at 2297 Cranberry Highway, Wayham, Mass. This is gonna appear on assessors map 100 watt T10 in the MR30 zoning district. And you are she, please explain to us what's going on.
To be honest with you, I think I was misclassified, but because it's not a commercial law, he's stating that I cannot have because the food truck doesn't move, he's classified me as a restaurant.
Okay.
However, on a non-residential law, you are allowed to have a roadside stand, and that is my belief, is that this is a roadside stand, I've given you a picture. I've had a public opinion poll taken with 163 people signing it, stating they also agree that it's a roadside stand, which you can have a roadside stand.
You can have, excuse me, according to what portion of our bylaw are you allowed to have a roadside stand?
On MR30, the same one he's referring to that says a restaurant can't be on a non-commercial law, it does say that you can have a, I think I printed it out for you.
Okay.
Page 196, multiple resident, maybe that one.
But I'm gonna pull out the bylaws and we're gonna look at them together, just so that I follow your argument, I haven't looked at his
And even if, and even if it's supposed to be a restaurant, I've been there since June of 2020.
So what is, I've been there, what is this roadside stand, or?
It's a hot dog stand.
A hot dog stand, and where is it?
So if I went to a fair, I would be considered a concession stand.
Yeah.
The police have stopped by and said, oh, if we did a high-speed pursuit, we told them we were going by the hot dog stand. So it's a hot dog stand. We are food, our home kitchen is certified, so 90% of our food is cooked at the house and brought to the shop, it's, I mean, I Walmart, I, I cook french fries.
So tell me, where's 2297 Cranberry?
Just beyond the cranberry bogs, you go past Walmart, there's some cranberry bogs headed towards the courthouse.
Is this the red one where they just built some
Yes.
They built a structure for repairing some boats, we had those, we had the property you're on
Yep.
Was in front of this board for permission to put up
I am well aware, and I'm feeling as though I'm a rebuttal for the landlord's
Rebuttal is, is an answer to, but you mean, you think you're being punished?
In a sense, I kind of do.
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, it's never been an issue
You're entitled to, you know
My feelings.
I don't think that's, I'm, I think this guy, I told Paul, Commissioner, he treats everybody the same. Cool.
And I even went back to Paul, and I spoke with Paul, and I said, I really feel as though you're misclassified, especially when I found out the price to be here.
Everybody that gets a no from our commissioner thinks he's picking on him, everybody gets a yes, thinks he's a good guy.
And that was a reasonable question.
Yeah.
When you look at the picture of what is sitting there, it is on wheels.
Just wanna let you know, sorry to interrupt, he did not call it a restaurant, his letter to us states it's a stationary mobile food truck.
Yeah.
So he's not calling it a restaurant, just to let you know.
But that's what he told me in person, is because I don't move, he's classifying it as a restaurant.
He didn't classify that way to us.
Okay.
Sir, I know you're gonna wanna speak, so before you start putting your up-two cents in, let's hear your name.
Charles Woodbury.
Charles Woodbury.
It's my husband.
Okay. Okay, so
So it sounds like you ought to move it five feet either way every week.
Well, and that's where I said, show me, where does this, how do you know I don't move, and where does it say that I have to? I pay lot rent there, I need power 24/7.
He makes, he makes a decision on the ruling, and that's why you're here.
I get it.
Okay.
And the town $750 richer for it.
Oh, yes, and the post office is another 250, and the newspaper
I just wanna, I just wanna
It's a lot of hot dogs.
I just wanna say, she was there for five years, and there was no problem, she had to come here and do all the
Well, only five, I was thinking she was there for seven, eight years.
I've been in town for eight years.
Yeah, okay.
Prior to that, it was located by Sullivan, yeah.
You were over by the plumbing store, though.
Yeah.
So
Stop in, I'm a fan of mainly dogs.
Little Red Kitchen, I get it, okay, there's a picture of it.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to shoot the messenger, I'm just a little
She's upset.
Well, you're the messenger, where, where are the
I, I know, I
Where the post office.
We're the stepchildren, seem to be wanting to be there.
So, no, that's all right, I get it, you, you know, that's why, that's why they've got me here, because if people come in mad, I get them pissed off. Oh, wait a minute, I can't say that, and I'm supposed, they keep telling me
You had orders tonight.
More decorum, I'm supposed to be nice, if they come in mad, I make them angry.
You had orders.
Madder.
Yeah.
No, I'm joking with you, I wanted to get to the pillar of departments, and I want a minute to read his So so have you had a business certificate in the past?
Yes.
And so you want to renew it, would you get a, get a call from
And he said he wanted to speak with the Board of Health or whatever, I left like little Mary Poppins, red riding hood, all happy, okay, have fun. I'm all up to date with all my inspections and fire inspections. So, and then he came by the shop, I wasn't there, and when I came here to see what it was about, is when I got my denial letter.
Historically
Yeah, see sentence.
You've had, you've been legally operating out of your home.
Yes. Yes.
I think, I call them roach coaches, food wagons, whatever.
That's fine, yes.
Yeah, you know, I don't, you know concession stands have to work out of a Board of Health-approved facility.
Absolutely.
And they have to have a three-hole sink, and they have to have a mop sink
Portageon, we have a portageon here. I'm in
So you did all that, and you got
Everything.
And the Board of Health went
Yeah, even the Board of Health
Okay, and the reason you have to have all that is because it's assumed that you're gonna tow that concession stand back to that facility and clean it.
Excuse me, I have a holding tank, I have a portageon on location.
And the reason they want you to have that facility is because they want, the Board of Health wants to regulate the facility that that concession stand gets cleaned at. So I believe that's the basis of the commissioner's contention. I believe.
Okay.
I'm, I'm, you know, you know what happens when you assume, so I could be assuming wrong, but that's probably, that's probably the basis.
To me, his biggest beef was because I didn't move, and that made me a stationary
In order to bring it back to your, in order to bring it back to your base of operations, you'd have to move it. So that's, what, 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 he, he's got, I can see his argument, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
When people have these things on wheels, there was, used to be one in Wayham called Wayne's Coffee Time, they had a bunch of, you know, the stainless steel trucks, and they'd go to the contractors and open up the sides, give them coffee and donuts and pre-made sandwiches, they all had to go, and that's, you are under the same rules.
Okay.
Board of Health rule, and so so you're telling me, look, I've got a hot water heater, somehow, somehow water gets to your concession stand? Somehow
I'm just asking evidently
It has its own hot water.
Pardon me?
But I'm just asking, now that we've clarified that I'm not misclassified, you know, you're gonna consider me a restaurant, now I need a use variance for being there, because it's not a commercial lot.
Correct, that, and that's what he's
And that's what it boils down to.
And that's, that's what he, and I, and I don't think he, I don't, I personally, I get your point, I get the commissioner's point. And I hope you get my point, that you're not hauling your concession stand back to a Board of Health facility, a Board of Health-approved facility.
But why, this, you have to, the place has been inspected and it's approved by the Board of Health, the
It's been approved by
Yeah, they come there every six months.
It's been approved by
Look at it at any time, it's cleaner than probably a lot of people's own homes, that's how anal she is about it.
Not arguing that point at all. Not arguing that a point, not saying she doesn't clean it. I'm saying, as I understand the rules, and I'm not, and I'm not affiliated with the Board of Health, so the Board of Health may disagree with me, but as I understand the rules, you're granted a permit, and the reason you're granted the permit is because you have a facility to bring that entire concession stand, that entire portable unit, that entire roadside stand back to a Board of Health, does the Board of Health come to your house?
Yes.
And they inspect that?
Yes.
And what are they looking at?
I have two permits, one for the house and one for the shop.
They've only been there once.
Okay, so
Yeah, but they, it is, it's, I get a permit yearly from them.
Yep.
For both locations.
I get it.
Yeah.
So, and, and there's, and there's places in town that, once upon a time, you went up to the window and you said, I'll have a hamburger, and you get back in your car and you drove away. Then the following year, you went up to the window and you'd said, I'll have a hamburger, and I'll go sit on your picnic table. And the following year, you went out and you got a hamburger and you sat on your picnic table, under the roof that they added to their roadside stand. And now that's been closed in, and there's a patio, and
And those roads you would deal with as you progressed along, exactly.
Things change, so as things progress, so commissioner has said, you've been there for a while, it hasn't moved, I think you need a variance. And you paid the 750 bucks. You came in here angry, we're gonna try to make you leave happy, but I can't promise that. It's up to these guys.
Okay.
I've only got one vote. Any questions?
I have no questions.
Any questions?
Does the, does the hot dog stand actually move?
No.
It's, it's a, it's a trailer.
I mean, the trailer, right, so, but it, it can't move.
We do not move it, I leave it there at that location, connected to power, for the refrigeration and freezer.
We've had multiple places, like even with the park over there on
Many people have asked, and I decline and say, we, we stay stationary, we don't move.
In defense of your position, and in response to your question, your answer should be, yes, it's movable, it's on axles, it's, I can back up to a, a truck, I can unplug the power, I can unplug the water, and I can tow it off a lot.
I can move in five minutes if I needed to.
That ain't, there's, that was the question you were asking, isn't it?
Oh, I thought you were asking, do I do functions, do I go to functions, sorry.
Physically, it's capable of being moved, very easily.
Absolutely.
You're, you're angry because you have a totally portable unit.
Exactly.
The commissioner is angry, if we're gonna use the word angry, because
I'm not utilizing, yeah.
And you just, you know, you took a shotgun and shot yourself in the foot.
To me, that's my prerogative.
No, it doesn't move, it
That's my prerogative because of the rent and the That's my prerogative because of the rent and the electricity, I could take it home every night and plug it in when I got home. But I shouldn't have to do that when I'm paying lot rent, why do I have to? It doesn't say anywhere in those bylaws that it has to move, you know?
The bylaws, and again.
That's, that's all I'm saying, and if I'm here for a use variance, then so be it, let's do it, figure out if I can or not.
Mr. Chair, can I just make one clarifying point? So when you apply for a business certificate with the town clerk, there is a zoning review that goes along with that?
Exactly.
Previous town clerks were not doing the zoning review, and that is simply the only reason why this is here. The current town clerk followed the rule, which was there is a zoning review applied to the business certificate. This currently does not meet the zoning, and you are here for a, a variance to the zone. It's, it's as simple as that.
Yeah.
And just to further belabor the point, once a week, if you said, I'm closed on Tuesdays, and on Monday night you hauled the thing home and scrubbed it down and brought it back on Wednesday morning, this whole thing would be out the window because.
Well, when he said you don't move, I'm like, how do you know, how does he know?
But, well, um, he hired some detectives.
And I'm honest, and, yeah, I know.
Hired some detectives and they sat there for 72 hours, and they got affidavits and, um, Trump had Air Force One come, moved in from Queca.
Trust me, I wish if I could, I could flip it around in the winter months, so the sun is shining on my customers' back and they're not so cold ordering their food.
My question is, is how many times you have to move it?
You're, you're here for a variance.
Yeah, we're just doing the use variance.
Oh, okay.
My experience with the border health, if they, if you ask the border health that, they'd say they want it to come back to the, to the approved facility on a daily basis and be sanitized before it goes out for use the next day. I have a little bit of a food service background. I've had permits issued on my name in the restaurant business. I graduated from a, one of the world's finest schools for restaurant and hotel management, I'm a graduate of the Collar Institute of America. So I know a little bit about which we speak. And I can assure you, if you ended up in court, you'd find out that that concession stand is granted the right to be there, because the border health is assuming that it's going back to a facility and being sanitized on a daily basis.
I'm pretty sure that Patrick and the woman that inspect know that it does not move as well, from its current location, even though it's capable of moving.
Let me tell you something, there was a $7 million restaurant built on the waterfront in Wayham, and everybody knows that the patrons are gonna park in a town parking lot.
Well, and I did have the discussion with her because she did show up since I got the letter.
That's all right, you can interrupt me while I'm talking, but I'll keep talking. But that restaurant doesn't have a permit for the occupants based on the parking across the street, even though the parking. So everybody in town knows they're gonna park there, but they still can't offer a permit for occupancy, even though there's adequate parking, because they're not controlled. So it's, like you said yourself, you need a use variance.
Yep.
And you're irritated that you need a use variance.
It is what it is.
And if I were you, I'd be irritated that it cost me 750 bucks plus postage to get the damn thing. But we're treating you just like we treat everybody else.
I appreciate that.
It's just, you know, the, you, there's too many rules, I agree, but we all live in Wayham.
I don't think I would be so offended if it had started right from the beginning and it just happened to fall amongst, this is my eighth year of business.
Queen Elizabeth wouldn't have been so offended if Christopher Columbus didn't convince her.
I lose sleep, I came back and I tried to talk and.
You know, so. Anyway. The bottom line is, you're sitting there, you really don't wanna drag it back to a controlled facility on a regular basis, because that would be a royal pain in the behind. And if this board grants you a use variance for that site, you won't have to drag it back on a regular basis. If this board says, hmm, nah, we think it is a restaurant. So anyway, what's the position of the board? Do you wanna close the public hearing, you wanna keep yakking, what do you wanna do?
Do we wanna hear from the public?
Anybody from the, in this room or online that has a comment on this? Come on up, ma'am, state your name. Make your points. Well, you, you, you got a comment, it's, maybe it's pointless, but.
My name is Elaine Boddy, and I live directly in back of your pool place, and I never knew it was there until the leaves fell. And, well, my only concern is, she's a good lady to be doing what she's doing. People do comment on her hot dogs, and number two, my concern is, that S curve is the bound line of residential and commercial. So now is she commercial, are we changing the rules of Cranberry Highway? Or is it because she's able to move her cot, which makes it accessible for her to have her hot dog stand? That's my only comments. No one can answer that.
To answer your question, I don't know if your comment is in favor or against her, or if it's just, you just feel like finding out, asking some questions.
I just wanna find out, because.
So my answer to your question.
I don't wanna hurt anybody's thing, you know?
Yeah, no, my answer to your question is, the zoning is not being changed. This board doesn't change zoning. This board can make recommendations.
Oh, okay.
To make zoning changes, and then the planning board can either agree or disagree, and then it goes in front of the town, and during town meeting, the whole town gets to vote. But until the whole town votes, there's a map of how Wayham is zoned, and it sticks. And the way where her cot currently is, the way it's currently zoned, what she's doing is not allowed.
Oh.
Okay? If it was, if it was, she had her house there and she had a tomato stand out front and sold hot dogs and tomatoes.
Like we did years ago.
It would be a roadside stand, just like they did for.
Strawberries.
The center of Route 58 from the town line all the way to Buzzards Bay. You went 500, 250 feet one way, 250 feet the other way, it was all stripped commercial.
Yeah.
And that was the only road to Cape Cod, and everybody had a stand out there. For eight bucks, you can stay in a little crappy little wooden cottage with a toilet and a bed with a lousy mattress. And you got tired trying to get to the Cape because the traffic was so terrible. And then over the years, you know, it's changed.
It's changed, yeah.
But, but the zoning is currently the map that's approved in 2007. There's, there's somebody, she went, she got a letter and it said, you need to renew your business certificate. Every, everybody in town that has a business has to go up to the town hall and give them 50 bucks every so often for the town to say, okay, you can have a business in Wayham. And then when they do that, in the old days, the clerk would just say, oh, you want a business certificate? Okay, fine, and they'd hand it to her and off she'd go.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joe, thanks, Sam, you know, the good old days. Then time went by and they said, you know, when people come up and ask for a business certificate, maybe we need to find out what kind of business they're doing, where they're doing it, and is it appropriate use and that's where they're doing it. So when she first went up there, she got good old Joe, the good old boy treatment. Yeah, sure, you can do that, and they gave her a business certificate. When they said, come renew it, there's a new sheriff in the clerk's office and, 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 and somebody went and yelled at the new sheriff and said, you gotta make him go, you gotta put him in a cage, get a stick, sharpen it, and poke him a little bit. Make him go to the fire department, make him go to the police department, make him go to the border health, make him go down to the assessors' office, make him go all over town and get a bunch of people, make him go to the fire department, ask the cops if it's okay, and then go see the building commissioner and ask if that's an approved use in the zone. And she got to the building commissioner and the commissioner said, sorry, that's zoned residential, you can't do that there. So now she's in front of us saying, can you give me a variance? This board has the authority to grant a variance. Not changing the zoning, not changing the bylaw. We're giving her the opportunity to have a variance. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, 'cause I didn't realize that, that ever happened. This is the first time I realized that this lady was doing hot dogs, 'cause I didn't get the first, um.
Because the old, good old boy system just gave her a business certificate.
And I said, let me go that way.
They didn't make or mail you a letter.
I just wanted to see, I don't really, I wish her well, but I'm saying, did they change the zoning laws?
Nope.
Is this highway gonna be crazy like it did when I was a kid? And people were getting hit and.
The rule was always there. You could always, you could always circumnavigate the globe, even back in the days when people in Europe thought if you sailed to the West, you'd fall off the edge of the earth. But it changed, people, you know, we learn.
Well, not to make a bad comment, but this is the first time I got a letter inviting me to this, and I am probably her neighbor, 'cause I can go from here to there and I can see.
Yeah.
You know, but everybody that was to my left of Weaver Street got notes and they're way on the other side, and they're saying, where is this? And I was like, what do you have? And that's when I saw that, but then I got one, and I was like, oh, I feel like I should dress up, I'm going to a meeting, you know, because.
So you got a letter and you felt obligated to come here and.
Right.
And now you're all dressed up and we appreciate you being here.
Well, I didn't get all dressed up, but.
You got a night out.
I got a night out, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But now we have to go feed.
Thank you for asking the question.
And I wish her luck in what she's doing, because there are some good comments out there. So I don't know if that's a good or bad, so, whatever.
Are you, are you opposed to her being there?
It doesn't bother me, it's, my only concern is, I know when you have hot dogs, you have to have something where you're dumping your water. My concern is, this entire area where she's at and goes beyond, we are well-water people. And then there's conservation directly 50 feet from where the property that was a family, that's where conservation is protecting the wildlife and the drinking water. So if we see deaths, then we, they're gonna be looking at it, and that's a concern.
I don't.
That's a good, that's a.
You don't use hot, it's fried, the hot dogs are fried.
Fried hot dogs.
We have a hot, uh, we have a holding tank, and then we have a portable one, we drain the portable one off into the.
Yeah, and then the wastewater is just gray water, it's not, um, it's not food waste at all.
I gotta read up on these volumes.
No, I'm just saying, it's no worse than like washing your car outside, you know what I mean?
I hate those.
The oil comes, we have a 55-gallon drum that the oil goes right into, and they come and take that away, we don't throw any oil outs, outside.
Well, then the animals will be good.
Yeah.
Because I'm an animal person.
That was, that was a good point you brought up, thank you. So now I'm gonna ask it again, are you done?
I am.
Okay, so she brought up a good point, are you connected to a septic system?
No, I have the porta john, and the only water I have is my sink water that's thrown out.
So you, for your guests, for your customers or for yourself?
The customers have no, the only water I have for the customers is drinking water as bolted.
No, 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 if, if I came there to get a hot dog and said, I need to pee, can I use your porta john?
Yeah.
You'd say, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and if, and if you needed to go to the bathroom, you'd go use it, yeah.
I spend $185 a month for the porta john.
Somebody comes and empties it on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Okay, and your concession stand has a holding tank?
Yes.
And it has a black water tank and a gray water tank, or just a gray water tank?
Gray water.
Okay.
It's just the gray water.
Okay, and how does that get emptied?
It's, I have a holding tank or I just, it's like, I just throw it out.
Somebody come on a regular basis?
No, I dump that daily.
Dump it where?
Dump it out, like, it's a bucket of water, I throw it in the back.
On the ground?
Yes, it's just gray water, it's just my dish water.
Oh, I, I get it, and, and you can use gray water to water plants, et cetera, et cetera, but.
Yes, and the plant, where I dump it, the plants are growing. And I don't, I don't, there's no food or anything, I wipe all my, I'm anal because there's a holding tank, I don't want any onions or sauerkraut or anything like that going into my holding tank. So I wipe all that.
And how does that leave the site?
What? In the garbage. I take the garbage home.
You must know how does it leave the site?
How does?
Looking good or looking bad?
Oh, it looks amazing.
You know, you, so you, your, your food waste goes in a separate container and it leaves with you on a daily basis?
Yes.
I'm not, that's the border health's job, I'm not, where's zoning?
I'm like, uh.
Just.
My ears are getting red, the pressure.
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just. If somebody wanted to object, they could.
I mean, I used to take my oil to the town before the, the thing broke there, the monster that.
Yeah, I got it, well. I don't have a problem, um, I personally don't have a problem granting your variance to continue, because I believe you operate in a clean, safe, healthy manner. I can tell you that if that became a permanent structure, you'd have to have.
It's not gonna.
On-site search, you'd have to have lots of things.
And that was my point, as far as being a roadside stand, in the fact that I'm not hooked to public sewer, I'm not hooked to public water, I don't have a foundation, I don't have a bathroom, I don't even have heat in that thing, but I'm open year round.
So.
And it fits the confor, confirmation of a roadside stand.
So I'm gonna turn to my board now that we've had this discussion and brought up a lot of points, and ask the board if they think it's more appropriate to overturn the building commissioner's decision that it's a restaurant and not a roadside stand, or do we think it's more appropriate to grant her a use variance to operate there as a restaurant? And I say that because if we grant her a use variance to operate as a restaurant, could indeed the building commissioner turn around and say, okay, now become inspected as a restaurant? Create a septic system, tie it into a sanitary septic system, conform to all the codes of a permanent structure? And create a bigger problem by granting her a variance? I want the board, you know, I'm, I'm looking both ways and making everybody think about it. Commissioner says he thinks it's a restaurant.
So is there a way that you do move this?
It's a trailer.
I know, in the future.
We have the truck to do it and everything else, it's just, to do it, you gotta take all the fry later, oil out of the fry laters and it's so much, it's a.
It's a process to move the unit.
To take everything down.
Off the walls, the microwaves, you don't want anything jostling around while you're moving it, that's.
It's like a camping trailer, when you set it up to go from one campsite to the next, it's a.
And that's why I don't do functions, you have to have enough capacity to take everything with you, and I, I just don't have that storage type.
So we, I mean, we could approve as a variance for a stationary mobile food truck, that is an option for us, not a restaurant. He listed as a stationary mobile food truck and says that if it's gonna continue, a use variance must be given. So we could do that.
Can I just make one comment for your consideration? Uh, remember your use variance is run with the land, not the business, just something to think about.
That was my next question as well, am I gonna go through this every four years?
Should we close the public meeting so we can only be talking?
Well, she's, are you done or do you?
Well, and that would be my next question, if you do grant a variance, am I gonna go through this every four years?
Yep.
So I'll have to come back and do.
Once you got a variance, you've got a variance.
Okay.
That variance goes with the land.
Okay.
If you take the, if you take the food cart elsewhere, you don't have a variance for elsewhere.
No, no, that, that's fine, I don't wanna move, because if I do have to move, I, I'm done, I, I'm too old to play this game, it's too much for me.
But. Everybody understands my question about, if we make it a variance, are we making it a permanent restaurant? And.
Well, it would be a permanent. Well, it would be a permanent stationary mobile food truck.
Right. It's a per, it's, it's a permanent temporary thing? Or is it a temporary-permanent thing? Is it a fat skinny guy or a tall short guy?
Celtics need a tall skinny guy.
I think people are getting, you know, my concern. I'm not saying that the, the building department is out to hurt people, but they're out to enforce the rules. So.
And we don't want to create more.
I, I just, I just don't want to say, yeah, you got a variance, you're now, you're now, we grant you permission to be there permanently, and you get an orange sticker on the side of your thing that says cease and desist, you don't have an onsite septic system. So, and I can see that happening. I, I'm, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I'm.
So Ezra.
Looking for trouble where it isn't, but.
Well, no, you're looking out, because it'll happen.
I'm, I'm more concerned about this lady than she thinks I am.
I appreciate it.
But, you know, I just don't, you know. I, I think if we grant a use variance, we're granting a variance for this location to be a restaurant. And if you're going to be a restaurant, border health's coming.
And that goes back to my original theory, is that I
Septic systems coming.
Truly feel this truck is a roadside stand. It is made of temporary materials.
Still not.
No, that goes back to, that goes back to.
I don't understand how it's not, because it says a food, a food stand can have food as long as the stuff is made at your house. And brought, which it, the coni is, the mac and cheese is, the Italian sausage is. Everything is cooked. It is within the size range.
So now where.
It's the farm stand. It says.
Where'd you, you got this out of the bylaws?
Yes.
And what, what's, there's got to be a number on that.
PG-13 zoning bylaws?
Page 13. PG stands for page.
Sounded like parental guidance to me.
PG. Okay.
It's actually 12.
12?
It's actually 12 on the table, the 330 table. It says farm stand or roadside stand. And it's acceptable in any district. But it doesn't really give, I couldn't find a description of a farm stand or roadside stand in the bylaws.
Oh, okay. Up at the top of page 12, third item down from the top, no, second item down under accessory use. Farm stand or roadside stand. And you're, you're zoned MR30 or R30?
MR.
MR30. So we go across here and we look at MR30, and it's a big Y, yes, for a roadside stand.
And that's, that was my whole feeling, is that we're not on a foundation.
But then you go down, skip recreational activities. And food and beverage services and accessory uses related to permitted recreational activities. Food and beverage services is a big N, no. So. I'm not saying you're not a roadside stand.
Well, and that's where it's very confusing, because in the roadside stand, it does state that you can serve food if it's cooked at home. Now, I do warm it up there and.
Definitions, you went to definitions for roadside stand? Is that how you get that language?
Uh, no, I thought it was in the bylaws, but I didn't bring a copy of them with me, so.
That's all right. I'm going to look at definitions, maybe that's where you found that language.
Page 14, Jim.
What is it?
Page 14.
Page 14? It's a note?
It's a, it's a definition, if you want me to read it to you.
Oh, okay.
There it is.
Animal, writing, where. Farm stand, okay. A, a structure erected and used. Okay. And I don't think you have 350 square feet in gross, gross floor area. Let me read that section about, but again. Within the minimum 12 feet. If built of wood and other readily movable materials without a foundation, integral heating or permanent utility connections. So you don't have a foundation.
No.
You don't have integral heating, even though you have fry laters that can heat. They're not there to
Right.
heat you. They're there to heat the food. Or a permanent utility connection is your temporary, you plug in, you know, you plug your portable trailer into a, with a the plug, that anybody could do it. You don't need an electrician's license to make the connection.
Nope.
And not over 350 square feet of gross area. Farm stand or roadside stand?
But the top sentence does say that the majority of the food needs to be raised.
Yeah, you're supposed to be growing it on the site. Yeah, I get it.
Doesn't say cooked food. It says.
Doesn't say anything about cooked.
Doesn't say anything about food, actually.
No.
Says sale of products.
Veronica, I think your understanding of what needs to be voted on is the accurate way to move forward with this application. I, I don't think it's the use variance for a farm stand.
So it would be a stationary food truck.
And it wouldn't be classifying it as a restaurant either.
So you're going to use as what, under your?
Mobile.
Um, yeah, the mobile food truck.
Stationary mobile food truck.
Yeah, stationary mobile, mobile food truck. I think Veronica has it right. If you wanted to make a motion based off of.
I don't want to make the motion. I'm trying to prompt somebody else to do it, and I can't just get anybody to do it, so I keep talking until somebody makes a motion.
If the motion was how Veronica understands it, that would be appropriate.
I'll leave a big pregnant pause and hope somebody.
I mean, what, I, I don't know what the thoughts of everybody else on the board is. I mean, that raises a lot of questions, like you said.
Make, make a motion, and then, then you'll know what everybody else thinks.
You got to close first.
Well, yeah. Are we done?
Anybody else in the audience?
We asked if, you guys back there were waving earlier. Were you waving because you wanted some of the candy, or did you, oh, okay. You didn't want any.
Did they get some?
Okay, they got some. Okay. So, do we have a motion to close this discussion to the public?
Before you close it, can I, before, can I just ask one clarifying question to the applicant? Did you say you're cooking french fries in the stand? Are you cooking in the stand?
You got fry laters.
So you're, so you're cooking french fries, onion rings, maybe, something like chicken tenders or something? Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Conte and seconded by Ms. Debonese to close the public portion of this hearing. All in favor? Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
We've talked it to death. Nobody can talk anymore about the board. Any comments amongst the board?
I think Josh had a good comment about the fact that the use variance goes along with the property, not the tenant. I mean, if we could assure that we had one specific tenant there, and that was, you know.
Well, that was going to be my question. Can we just limit it to this hot dog stand at one time, at one, one only? After this permit is done, and then somebody else has to come in for the use var, I mean, is there any way that we can just limit it to?
A hot dog stand?
Well.
Or this hot dog stand.
Or just this hot dog stand?
Or just one.
I know that.
We could put limits, like probably only one.
One, I would say.
Must have the porta potty, must, you know, whatever maybe that she has. But.
I know that in the past in Wareham, use variances have been granted, for instance, for split level houses in single-family neighborhoods. Use variance have been granted to put a second kitchen in and make it a two-family house. And the kids live upstairs and the parents live downstairs in the form of a two-family. But when that family moved out, the use variance expired, and it was recorded that way in their deed.
So if it's a use variance.
When the transfer title happened, when that family no longer owned that property, that variance was extinguished, if that helps the question about.
So if there's anything else that goes on, and it's not a hot dog stand, and it has to be a use variance, has to come in for another variance for the change of use, right?
I, I don't, I don't, it goes with the land. It doesn't expire because they move.
If we, if we, if we said it was a hot dog stand, and then the property owner later on went down and wanted to put a some other kind of stand on there, there would be a use variance change? If we.
It would have to be a change of use, and if you're categorizing the use as a stationary mobile food truck, then realistically, someone who does french fries only, or cookie sandwiches or something, would have the ability, if that's what it was.
It would be that in perpetuity.
So so the use, your contention is the use would be granted to the address. But could the use be specific to the concession stand that's being granted a variance?
No, you can't put a time limit on it.
Not a time limit?
No, you can't, you can't make it specific to one individual or business.
So that lot would always have the ability to have a stationary mobile food truck?
If you call it, if you call it a stationary mobile food truck.
Well, maybe.
You could just grant her permission to have a portable food truck there, and that it doesn't need, that this, that, that that this board doesn't feel compelled to require them to move it off the site on a regular basis to prove that it's portable.
I, I'm wondering.
As long as there's an axle under it, it's portable, as far as I'm concerned.
What if we put that in there, that it has to have?
I mean, the state of Massachusetts won't let the town of Wareham count every mobile home in the town of Wareham as affordable housing, because the axles are under the mobile homes. And the mobile homes aren't allowed to take the axles out from under them, because they'll lose their status as a mobile home.
So I think that we need to put that in there.
So her concession stand has an axle and tires under it. And you can back up to it, and by her testimony, you can unplug it, unplug the hose, drain the grease out of the fry later, pour it in the backyard, and drive away.
Okay, until the state lets us do that, then I think we should agree to this one.
Well, I have, I want to just, actually, maybe Josh could answer this, but I have a question about. So my concern on this property is that if we grant this, no matter what gets put on that property later, you can always have the stationary mobile food truck, because we are allowing it, so.
Get rid of the word stationary.
That's not the point, though. Whatever we allow on this property, other than an MR30 house, multifamily, or whatever it can have, is going to be in perpetuity. So I think.
No, not in perpetuity. If the use is abandoned for two years, it's.
Unless they come and change it, or that happens. Correct.
And for somebody else to go there, they're going to have to go to the town and get a business certificate to go there. And the town's going to say it's not, oh, it's, it's, it's an allowed use, because there's been a variance granted for a concession stand on that site. So frankly, I, if we grant this, I could go to the clerk's office tomorrow and say, we talked with the landlord, and he says I can put my concession stand there too, and I want to sell meatball subs. And there's been a use variance granted for that site. And I think it's great. I'll tell my people not to sit at her picnic table.
So Jim, not to, you're interrupting where I was trying to go with it into another direction, so I just want to finish.
I'm just trying to make sure we go in the right direction, that's all.
So my question, and this is kind of for Josh, if, because, because my concern is that once this property gets developed, then you're always going to be able to put that mobile stand there. The next person can come in, have a house, and then also have the stand. Is it possible to make this use the primary use, so that if something else changes with the property, they can no longer have it as a use? Because if there's a house there, that becomes the primary use, and this would not be an allowed use.
Is this the only thing on that lot?
I was just going to ask that.
I believe it is, right?
No, no, it's a brown house. The lot was in front of this board already.
Yeah.
And they wanted to build a big structure and put a bunch of boats in it, a bunch of hobbyists were all going together, and they were all going to and the, and the decision of the board was, you can't have that, because you don't have a primary structure. It would be blah, blah, blah. So they told them that they had to build so they built a small house on the lot, I believe, just to satisfy the, just to satisfy the rules, so they could have a barn to fix their boat. So I, I'm sorry, I disagree with Josh, and I disagree with the conversation. I personally feel the easiest way to grant this lady relief, if that's the, if that's the sense that I'm getting from the members of the board, is to simply say, we disagree with the building commissioner. We don't think this is a restaurant. We don't think it's a permanent structure. We disagree with his decision that it's a roadside, not a roadside stand. We think it is a roadside stand. It's an allowable use. Go on with your life. That's the way I think. And you, now you've, now you haven't given the site a variance for use. You've said she's.
A farm stand?
She's performing in allowed use. She's got a roadside stand. Do you think it's a roadside stand? Or do you think it's a restaurant? Commissioner thinks it's a restaurant? She thinks it's a roadside stand?
Commissioner thinks it's a stationary mobile food truck. So we're going to overturn his decision that it's not a stationary mobile food truck, and we're going to say it's a farm stand?
Nope. He never called it a stationary mobile food truck.
That's what his letter says.
Yeah.
It is in the letter.
His letter says it's a stationary mobile food truck.
That's exactly what it said. We have to work with what he's given us. He's calling it that, and it's not an allowed use.
Principal use, stationary mobile food truck. Primary use.
No, no, I wrote that. Sorry. And he's saying this is not an allowed.
Not a listed allow.
Right, right. Not listed allowed.
So he ma.
This is what he's calling it.
He made up the word stationary mobile food truck.
Correct.
That's what he's calling it.
That's right.
And you want to call it the same thing. And I'm saying, if you don't call it that, you disagree with his decision, it's not a stationary mobile food truck, it's a mobile food truck.
I.
I think it's a mobile food, food concession stand. It's mobile.
Well, I like the.
It's like the mobile home, it means mobile. If they want to go into Garden Homes North and hook onto a mobile home and tow it away, they can. They don't.
So Mr. Chair.
And she doesn't, but she can. I think her use is allowed.
But I, I would, I would disagree, I guess, with the building commissioner, that that is not the principal use of the property.
Correct.
Because she's leasing the land.
I brought that into it, because I didn't know there was a house on, and I was trying to restrict it to just this, if the owner of the property wanted to do something else, but I didn't know there was a house on.
Yeah, it's a small little house.
Sorry, we shut you off. We voted, you can't talk anymore.
So we were.
But you can keep giving us the finger if you want.
So we could over.
Look under the table.
Actually, where, where in here do we have, does the bylaw talk about a mobile food truck? I have the old.
No, that's, see, the way.
Okay, so.
The way it works is, they make a list of things that you can do. And then they come up with what they call English law. And English law says, if it's not listed as a yes, it's automatically a no.
I know. I'm just, I'm just.
So he came up with words that aren't on the list of yeses, and said, therefore, it's automatically a no. So you're using his words to make it a no.
Okay, but we would be in the same situation if we overturned a description and call it a mobile food truck, because again, it's not.
It is a mobile food.
I know, but it's not listed, so we would, we would still be having the same thing.
So we, we're going to disagree with him and say that we think it's a mobile truck and go from there.
We think it's a roadside stand.
Yeah, but then is it going to come back and say it's a
I don't know.
It, if something is not defined in the zoning bylaw.
As allowed.
No, no, just defined at all. Commissioner Turner tries to apply the most logical definition to it, right? If that's not listed in your zoning bylaw, it requires a variance to allow, period. Right? So what he's done is he's looked at a definition of what he believes this use is. Cannot relate it to anything in the zoning bylaw, and that's why you need to vote on a variance for it.
So I, I would say two things that we might want to consider doing. One. One is to overturn his description of what this is to a mobile food truck, like you said, Jim. And then two, we have to decide if we want to grant the variance for that.
Because it's not listed as an allowed use.
Right, so we're back at the same.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I, I agree. And I think we may need to make two motions. One, that we don't think it's a stationary structure or permanent structure. We think it's a mobile structure. And that we grant a variance for that use as a mobile structure on that site.
And I would make it an accessory use.
There you go.
Why, why do you think, Chris? Because it's not considered, not the primary?
It's become a primary use.
Yeah.
So you're not making it.
We could limit it to one.
Yeah, limit it to one, mobile.
Mobile.
So that limits, anybody that gets on there can compete. So you say you can have one.
One. So you can't have somebody else bring another one on there.
There goes my meatball sub stand.
You're going to have to find somebody else, buddy.
Unless you'll make meatballs for me.
Well, that's all right. I'm just going to go to the house.
She can't talk. Don't invite her in. She's not able to talk.
They gave them a variance over there. I want a variance over here. I'm selling meatballs.
So one, one mobile roadside stand?
You could, you don't think it's a, I think your first thing you're going to do is over, I think what I'm hearing Veronica saying is that she wants to make a motion that it's not a permanent structure, that it's a mobile food concession trailer. And then second, she wants to make a motion that we grant a use variance on the lot for a
One?
Mobile, for one mobile food trailer, concession stand, whatever you want to call it.
So it was the first one that you said?
For use. So you can't.
Yeah, the first motion was for stationary.
The first vote is that it's not permanent. And the second vote is the use because it's not a food, a mo- a mobile food concession is not an allowed use, not listed as an allowed use in MR30 or R30.
By permanent, you mean permanent, you mean not stationary?
I mean like no concrete foundation. It's not permanent. It's not, it's just like a mobile home is not a permanent home.
I think it's better to call it mobile because we don't want somebody to get in there later that doesn't move something.
Right. That's why I like the word, that I agree with the word mobile.
An accessory use, one mo- how, how do you want to phrase it? One mobile stand accessory use or an accessory use?
Grant accessory use to allow one mobile food trunk.
There you go. Make that motion.
Who wants to make that?
So we would have to make a motion first to overturn the commissioner that it's not a permanent
I think the first.
Structure.
I think you should make, somebody should make a motion that they don't believe that it's deemed a permanent, you know, whatever the word is.
Stationary.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to overturn the description of the commissioner that it's a stationary, mobile food truck because it has the ability, has wheels, it's on an axle, axle and it can move.
And I second that.
So the motion's been made and set by Veronica and seconded by Richard.
To overturn.
To overturn the commissioner's determination that it's a stationary, mobile food concession. All in favor, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Myself. I'll wait. Richard.
Aye. Christopher, aye.
Christopher. And I'll go along, aye. Okay, so unanimously, we don't think it's a stationary. We believe it remains mobile.
And now we're granting?
We, we, we believe that at any time, if you get a whim to take it home and power wash it and bring it back a day or a few days later or at some future point.
Is there any way in one month you could do something? Move it, change something in it, clean it, adjust something, fix a window? Well, I'm just saying, it would, it would, it would, it would help. Put it this way, it would help, it would help the board if it's not stationary.
Yeah, yes. Oh, we could, yeah.
Maybe static is the word, but.
We could put actually, because we are creating, it's not part of the bylaws, right, what this is. And if we're going to grant a variance, we could put conditions in, in terms of like you said, when.
You could make a condition that it has to be moved every, once every quarter.
Now, is there somebody that's supposed to check in and do that?
Six months, once a year.
No, because then that puts the onus on.
But.
So then we create something that.
But you, you know, I don't know how necessary it is. But it's up to you guys, you know, if you want to. I don't care how you weight her down, burden her with bylaws. So.
Can I, can I just make one clarifying point?
Yeah.
About something that was said earlier. The barn structure on the property actually has a cease and desist on it. That was never permitted. Just.
It was what, never permitted?
Never permitted, yeah.
Was built without a permit?
It currently has a cease and desist on it.
I believe it's been.
Okay, so when they came here and were told they had to build a house to build the barn, they probably did like the storage unit did over there beside the future Popeyes. They probably said, oh, they said it's okay. Let's go build it. But they never did go get a permit to build it.
Yeah, I just see a cease and desist in the record.
Yeah, yeah, okay. There's a lot of that, that's happened more than once. I can name instances where somebody comes in front of this board and they get past this board and they think, we're all set. But you still have to go back and, in some instances.
To speak, but I was there before he even owned it. I was there.
I know you were.
Okay.
So we're going to, how do we want to phrase this?
So far, so far, all we've done is nullify his description of her.
And I want to move on.
Me too.
We've only got four more folders.
Yeah, so we're, we're going to grant accessory use of one mobile roadside stand? Food truck.
Food truck. Food truck.
Concessions.
Is that a motion?
So I make a motion to grant an accessory use to a mobile roadside.
For a mobile.
For a mobile roadside stand.
Food concession stand.
Food, food concession stand. All right.
Okay. So that's your motion.
Let's call it a food truck so nobody brings something.
All right.
It's not a truck, it's not an engine.
Though, to. It's a trailer.
Trailer, trailer, trailer.
Food trailer.
And would you, would you allow a self-propelled vehicle if she, what if she goes and buys a truck and buys a trailer?
Registered?
Registered.
Okay, so let's, let's start scribbling out and go back. So to grant an accessory use to a one.
Mobile.
Mobile.
Concession.
Concession stand.
Registered.
Trailer. Registered. Okay, we've got to throw registered in there.
It can be a vehicle.
Trailer.
A vehicle can be a trailer. It can be a car. It can be a motorcycle. It can be an airplane. It's a vehicle.
Do we want it to have an engine?
No.
Doesn't have.
Then a trailer would be the description.
You want to limit it to a?
Yes.
Yes.
Non-self-propelled?
Yes.
Yes.
Towable, okay?
Somebody, somebody else, I'm getting tired, I'm getting tired of scribbling it out, so. Let's run through this one more time to make it right. Accessory use of one mobile trailer.
Registered.
Registered trailer, one mobile registered trailer.
Not to exceed a certain size.
Food trailer.
Food, food, one registered.
Not to exceed 350 square feet, which would be huge.
Well, what size is it?
It's about a 16 footer.
I say we limit it to whatever size they have because I would not say yes to any other, anybody else, but only because the town made an error and gave you that and you've been there and established, I feel bad, so.
16, 16 foot trailer? So we'll go through it again. Accessory use for one mobile registered trailer.
16.
16 feet for food.
Yeah, not to exceed. So it doesn't get bigger than it is.
Is it 16 and not 18 or 20 or?
Well, when you buy them, they say it'll end of your tongue in the back is usually the footage. You could probably put 18 to be safe.
Yeah, okay.
Seize 20 feet?
Okay.
All right, 20.
Just to be safe.
So grant, to grant the access use to one mobile registered food trailer.
Not to exceed 20.
Not to exceed 20 feet.
In length.
In length. I second. Thank you, Chris.
Motion has been made and uttered by Mr. Simple and seconded by Mr. Conti. All in favor?
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Wasn't that fun?
Thank you.
And that was the smallest one on there, I thought.
And you guys, you guys.
I thought it would be quicker. I'm sorry.
You guys beat, you guys beat the elderly housing.
Attitude and it caused a whole ruckus, so.
You guys beat the elderly housing with the guy with the water next door. Okay.
Thank you for your work, guys.
That was work.
That was work.
You know.
Where are we at? We got one more?
Oh, we got two more.
Two more.
Two more.
Can we continue?
But we got two more folders, but I don't see people in the, oh, there's somebody sitting there very patiently. There's two groups. We're at 1624 Samit Fin, Finney. Does anybody need a break to go down the hall for a minute or anything or?
I'm all set. Yeah.
Hi, I gotta, I gotta read this in before we let you start, but. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing May 14, 2025, 6:30 PM, room 520 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 16 dash 25. Zoning 25 dash 12 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Samit. Am I saying your name right?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Samyatt.
Samyatt. Thank you, Samyatt. Sorry. And there is an I in there, I just.
No problem.
To Samyatt Finney of 19 Nicholas Drive, Wayham, Mass, seeking relief in the form of a variance for a multi-level deck to access rooftop deck at 19 Nicholas Drive, Wayham, Mass. This appears on Wayham Assessors Map 57, Lot WS13 in the MR30 zoning district. Samyatt, tell us, what are you doing?
I had built, when we originally applied for the permit, we built a spiral staircase, a wooden spiral staircase, and it wouldn't pass. George was out about four different times and I spent a lot of money trying to widen the foots, the footings and everything. So I tore that one down and built this one according to the, what I thought was according to the blueprint that we submitted the first time.
So you thought you built according to plan, but the building inspector came in and said, I don't care what you drew on the plan. This doesn't conform to building code.
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
And I am 11 inches over on half of the deck, the front half. My yard kind of goes to an angle. So that's what I was asking for a variance for. It's, I did do a door at the top, which isn't on, wasn't on the original building permit. So we had access to, from the top. It's a nice egress for the, I have adult kids that live with me, so. But it's a nice egress for the upper upstairs.
So I'm quick reading this here. And in reading the building department letter of why you're here. They came over your spiral staircase that didn't meet code.
I tore that down before that.
They came for that reason. And while they were there, they got nosy and they looked around and they got their tape measure out and they said, aha, we got you on something else.
Right.
And they found you that you're too close to the sideline.
Correct.
By 11 inches.
Yes.
Am I, if I'm saying, if I listen's right.
I think it's 11 inches.
Your deck is too close to the sideline.
I think I'm two inch, I think you're supposed to have 10 feet and I'm, and there's only eight feet and three inches.
You got to have 10 feet from the lot line and how far are you from the lot line?
Eight.
So you're two feet. You got two foot, you got two feet.
One foot nine inches if she's eight, three away, right?
Yeah.
And I read something about a rooftop deck. You got a deck on your roof?
Yes, that was in the original.
And that's all permitted and they, they're happy with that? You can go up there?
Correct.
You can call it a widow's walk. You can call it a rooftop deck. You can do whatever you want. It's okay. It's allowed to be there. The only thing that's wrong.
Well, the first one didn't pass inspection.
Well, yeah, but it does now. That's got nothing to do with why you're here.
Right.
The only reason you're here is because your deck.
Is over.
Is eight feet from the property line and it should be 10 feet from the property line. So you're two feet closer to your neighbor than you're supposed to be with your deck. Is your neighbor here complaining?
No, not at all.
Okay. You're sure? You looked around real good.
No, I, that noise scared me in the back, but no, they're definitely not here. They're nice people, actually.
Okay.
And I show, and I did take real pitches to see like that it's, it's definite, I made a mistake and it is over, but it's not like I'm on their front step. There's a lot of space in between and there's a fence in between that also.
Oh, okay. And I see in the supporting information here, boy, this has been going on.
Yeah, for a long time.
February 22, 2013, David Moore was the commissioner at the time and he told you, go forward with the project.
Yes.
Are you the same lady that was in front of us one time for having a place in the basement?
Yes. That's why I was there.
I said this before, my memory serves me too well sometimes, but I do remember things. Okay. So they made you pull the whole thing in the basement out?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, oh.
So now you got a deck that, that's two feet too close to the property line.
Correct.
And you need a variance or you need to take the deck and saw two feet off of it?
And I do not have the money for that. Not that anybody does.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Nope.
Anybody in the room or on Zoom raising their hand on Zoom with any comments in favor or against this application? Okay, the application in front of us is a request for a variance to grant relief for eight feet from the property line opposed to 10 feet from the property line. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
So moved.
The move is, the motion's been made by Troy Larson to close the public portion of this hearing. Do I have a second?
Chris Conti, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard.
Aye.
I don't think I got enough time.
Huh?
Isn't it like a half an hour per person?
Well, you know, what's.
No, don't say that.
No, no, she's.
Oh, I'm like, what did I say?
No, she's doing.
I'm kidding.
She's trying to give me a little bit, if you.
Little bit back.
They said, if you can't, if you, if you can't take the jester, don't be a comedian. Or if you can't take the heckling, don't be a comedian.
There you go.
So good heckle.
Thanks.
So it's been closed. All we need now is some bright person on this board to say, I make a motion and then follow with some words that would either grant or deny her request.
I'll make a motion to grant the request for relief for the two feet on the deck.
Been motioned by Veronica. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Troy. All in favor? Troy.
Aye.
Veronica.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Richard.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
See, if you wear them out early on with long things, the guys at the end get out of, because they get tired and they want to go home.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Thanks for the candy, Chris.
You're welcome.
Now, can I just ask a question? I go before the.
So what happens now, now, now anybody that's aggrieved with our decision has a certain period of time, 20 days.
Okay.
To go and file a grievance and take it to court and overturn our decision after that time passes and nobody has challenged our decision. Then you.
Go to the building inspector.
Then you go to the building inspector and ask him to close your, I think you've already got a permit to build it.
Yes.
So whatever, you know, but you got to wait the 20 days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Oh, we don't have any time for you, sir, sorry.
Oh, yeah? That last, the one before that one, I thought was gonna be.
I thought this whole night was gonna be quick.
I know. I jinxed us, didn't I jinx us when I came up?
Yes, you did, I'm thinking to myself, that wreck, when we were coming in here.
This should be an easy one.
Yeah, but you know what, it all depends on who shows up to talk.
It all depends, yeah, how talkative people are.
How gabby our chairman is.
What's that? Say it again?
It said how gabby our chairman is.
Hey, he came with good orders tonight. He is much nicer. I just want him to go home and tell the report that he's.
The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on May 14, 2025, at 6:30 PM, in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 17-25 for a variance or a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, Article 13, Section 1352, and Section 1353, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Charles and Maureen Tocido of 18 Apache Trail, Medford, Mass, proposing to renovate the existing deck at 3 Myrtle Street, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Assessors Map 2, Lot 58A, in the Onset Village 2 zoning district. Is Myrtle Street the street that you can cut down and get to the, to the marina?
Uh, I, I know the water's right there, I don't know where the marina is.
Okay.
From the site.
No, I think he's.
It's not the one I'm thinking of, then. Okay, so where's Myrtle Street in the world?
Um, it's.
Give me a landmark.
One street over from South Water.
From where?
Your buzz, your buzz is big, right over the, you go over the bridge.
Yeah, go past the marina.
Stone Bridge?
Yep.
Go down, and it's like the second or third, and you go out by the water.
I've only been there once, I don't even know.
Go past Stone Bridge, take a right at your first left.
And this was months ago, months and months ago.
There you go, buddy.
Stone Bridge.
Stone Bridge, it's right over you, South Water, North Water Street.
Yeah, 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 it's right in there, over near the cameo thing there. Yeah, I get it, where Trevor used to have his antiques, I got it.
Behind him.
Get you in the neighborhood, just trying to figure, figure out where you are. So what are you doing?
Um, we're trying to replace a deck, same size, everything, it's just rotten and dangerous, and we're just trying to pull a permit to be able to rebuild it. We're not increasing the size at all, so we're not, you know, increasing the.
No, but you're touching it, and that's why you're here.
Right.
So it's rotten and dangerous, and you need permission to make it safe?
Yes, the commission, the commissioner said, uh, he said, oh yeah, it's, uh, it's a non-conforming area, and so I have to come in front of the zoning board for that, so.
Does it's actually, is it, it looks like it's on the property line?
It's a pre-existing non-conforming use, is what you've got?
Yes.
That's the regulation.
Okay, so it's a pre-existing, but now you're, now you're messing with it.
Yes.
So the minute you mess with it, the town can say, no, now you gotta come into conformity, or you can continue to be non-conforming. And you're asking for us to allow you to continue to be non-conforming?
Yes, same size, not increasing the.
Everybody follow that?
I got it.
I got it.
Got it?
I read it, I got it.
The deck or the stairs or both?
I'm sorry, what?
The deck, the stairs, or both?
Uh, both.
Tearing it down and rebuilding it the same as it was.
You're not increasing the non-conformity?
In fact, it's actually six inches shorter than it was before.
So if you're not increasing it, you don't need a variance, we could act on this as a special permit, because he's not increasing a pre-existing non-conforming use, so.
Right after we close the public hearing.
So what would be appropriate, if everybody, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, is somebody would make a motion to close the public portion, then somebody would make a motion to treat it as a special permit?
So moved.
And then you'd make, okay.
I wanna make, I gotta ask a question.
Okay.
The deck is literally almost on top of the property line. The house looks like it's maybe a couple feet away? Can you line the deck up with the edge of the house so that it's no longer like on top of, .5 inches from the property line?
Well, the deck is on top of the first story structure.
There's a structure below it?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay.
I want to see you.
My question.
Get Ernesto to get a saw and cut that whole house right there.
Okay.
So any more questions from the board?
So we make a motion to close the public hearing.
So there's no, did we offer the public a chance to talk?
I don't believe.
Anybody in the room or on Zoom?
Johnny can't find anything lively on that screen.
Anybody, nobody raising their hand? Okay, and you got a motion to close the public portion?
I make a motion to close the public.
By Mr. Simple, do I have a second?
Second, Chris Conti.
By Mr. Conti, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so the public portion's closed, you can't talk anymore. Everybody, we, it's all just, yeah, we get it.
So is it a special permit or a variance?
I, um, you, are you making a motion that this should be, you don't find it detrimental to the neighborhood, and it could be treated as a special permit?
I make a motion to treat this as a special permit.
Because you don't find it detrimental to the.
I don't find it detrimental to the.
I'll second.
Seconded by Veronica, all in favor, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Richard?
Aye.
Chris, aye.
We're gonna treat you as a special permit.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion to grant a special?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
As a special permit?
As a special permit.
And do we have a second on that?
Veronica.
Seconded by Troy, Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.